Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, October the 5th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you're recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type hand up. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We have guests on the line with us this evening. Land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. I call on trustee Mazri Amar. Would you please lead us in the opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today I'll be doing the Our Father in Spanish for Latin American Heritage Month. So please join me in the sound of our faith. En nombre del Padre, del Hijo, del Espíritu Santo. Amen. Padre nuestro que estás en el cielo, santificado sea tu nombre. Venga a nosotros tu reino, hágase tu voluntad hacia la tierra como en el cielo. Danos hoy nuestra pan de cada día, perdona nuestras ofensas como también nosotros perdonamos a los que nos ofenden. No nos dejes caer la tentación y librados del mal. Amen. En nombre del Padre, del Hijo, del Espíritu Santo. Amen. Please rise for the O Canada and the O citizenship.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriotland. In all thy sons are blessed. With glowing hearts we sing thee, relics, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, we are blessed, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, trustee Mazri Amar. It was beautiful to hear the Our Father in Spanish. I think you had your computer on speed up. It was, I think, twice as fast, or my ears are getting slower, one of the two. Vice Chair Dwork, could you please read motions adopted in camera and information received in camera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion adopted in camera. The following motion was adopted in camera. Resolve that the Board of Trustees appoint Deloitte LLP as the external auditor for the three-year period ending with audit of the financial statement for the financial year ending August 31st, 2024, with the option to extend the contract for further duration of two one-year extensions ending December 31st, 2026. Information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Resignations. Lynn Bolton will resign effective October 7th, 2021. Acting Department Head. Kevin J. Da Silva, appointed as acting department head, effective September 20th, 2021, up to August 31st, 2022. Curriculum Consultant Journalist, STEAM Education. Matthew Kovacs, appointed as consultant curriculum journalist. STEAM Education, effective October 4th, 2021, for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. Teacher hiring. Konstantinos Zafridis, effective September 2021. Stephanie Esquander, effective September 21st, 2021. Cassandra Asselin. Claudia Capto Kevix. And Caroline Sanez Molina, effective September 22nd, 2021. Ryan Bellus. Helen Costerman and Victoria Rill, effective September 23rd, 2021. Matthew Scudetto, effective September 24th, 2021. Andrea Casquero. Matthew Italiano. Andrew Lucibello. And Sabrina Sajitjalo, effective September 27th, 2021. Gillian Cox and Kevin De La Roza, effective September 29th, 2021. Kathleen Pimentel, effective October 11th, 2021. Vice Principal Appointment. Sharon Geary, appointed elementary vice principal with a date to be determined. Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair Dwork. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Antamasi?
I draw your attention to 11.1. That should say November 26th, 2020. November 26th, 2021 hasn't occurred yet.
Correct, so we'll make that change. Thank you for catching that. Are there any other corrections? If not, we'll go to a, I'll ask for a mover to approve the agenda as changed or as correct, say changed or amended, corrected. Do I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew?
Who by trustee Agnew? We have a seconder? Vice Chair Dwork, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo? Back to trustee Guzzo, trustee Antamasi?
I'm against, Mr. Chair, on the basis that the recorded votes on the minutes.
That's fine, trustee Antamasi, if you're opposed, that's all I need to know. Trustee Carabella? Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hernturnata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor. Mr. Chair, I do apologize. I'm just in transit to a confirmation, so I might be, I'm listening. I'm just, I apologize if I delay.
No problem. Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the agenda motion carries. Item three, declaration of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest tonight? Seeing there's none, we'll move on. There are no presentations, delegations. We have one delegation this evening. Our delegates are on the line. I will let you know when to begin. 5.1 is supporting HCDSB diverse student body this evening. The delegation this evening is from Ms. Barakat and Ms. Kelly. Please be reminded that you have 10 minutes for your presentation and that you must stay to the script that is part of tonight's board agenda package. I ask staff to assist me in keeping track of the time. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Delegates, are you ready to begin?
Yes, we are. Kirsten?
Please, please proceed.
Before I start, can everybody see and hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Rahad Barakat. I'd hope that many other students and I have been clear as to the changes our student body needs. This delegation may be received as far more blunt than my previous ones, and I'm not apologetic for this. In fact, I think it is only fair to myself and other students fighting for this that our voice is delivered with the same frustration we are feeling. I came into my senior year waiting for the follow-through on the motion set on June 29th, in which our board had stated, quote, "Policy 126, student trustees on the Halton Catholic District School Board prevents non-Catholic students from becoming student trustees, limiting their ability for their voice to be heard at the board level." It resolved that the Director of Education asked staff to return to the Board of Trustees for the September 7th, 2021 regular board meeting, recommendations on how to provide equal opportunities for non-Catholic secondary school students, end quote. Many of us felt like we were finally heard and that the board would follow through with creating equity in the student trustee position after this. On September 7th, the student trustee item was in the agenda package for the first meeting, for the meeting. After reading the item and sharing it with peers, we were all disheartened with the result as there is no mention of changing the policy or any specifics regarding staff feedback as, as was mentioned in the last motion. This item stated that, quote, "While student trustees may not exercise a binding vote, they have an opportunity to influence the Board of Trustees in the management of Catholic District School Boards. In this sense, the student trustees form a part of the management of the school boards," end quote. That was the reasoning as to why non-Catholics can hold lesser leadership positions but not be student trustees in this board. However, the student trustee input on board decisions is brought by Student Senate, which is brought by non-Catholic senators such as myself, as well as non-Catholic senators, as Catholic senators. Student trustees and adult trustees alike should not be voting on their personal opinion, but instead voting on the shared opinion of the people they represent. Given that student trustees vote is non-binding and they are not only expressing their own opinions, but the Senate's, then the opinion is not strictly Catholic, as it is influenced by non-Catholics as well. I would like to point out that there's a difference between the Senate opportunities and representation in the student trustee role and the opportunities that are offered. Non-Catholics are qualified leaders and students and role models in a Catholic school board. This is why the Huron Catholic and Sudbury Catholic District School Boards allow non-Catholics to be student trustees, also proving that it is not a breach of denominational rights. There is nothing about being a non-Catholic that would prevent you from fulfilling the student trustee role well other than an outdated requirement in a policy adopted 23 years ago. The student body has tried to communicate that to you through delegations, petitions, and letters of correspondence, including one from Senate. Please refer to the letter of correspondence set by Senate this week in support of this issue and hear from our current student trustees who are, quote, "committed to promoting awareness of the issues affecting our students and our ability to enhance the importance of student voice," end quote. This is what was stated on the student trustee mission statement. They also represent our student body on the board level. First, Katie Bowie's statement, quote, "The HCDSB has made it clear that everyone is welcome within our doors. To deny non-Catholics the ability to represent themselves and be leaders within our community sends the opposite message, and it is not something that I believe our board should stand for. As a Catholic student trustee, I would be happy to welcome and work with any student trustees who are elected by their peers in a fair election, and I have a firm conviction that a non-Catholic student trustee could be just as good of a leader and role model for our student body as a Catholic student trustee. And for myself, our former Burlington student trustee, I would have to agree with our current student leaders. In the last year, we have heard from numerous student advocates, both Catholic and non-Catholic, in regards to supporting non-Catholic student trustees." Next, Alicia Tokiwa's statement, quote, "Amending Policy 126 is an important step in not only supporting and empowering the students at our board, but also simply allowing them to access the opportunities presented in secondary school." In Matthew, it is said, quote, "In everything due to others as you would have them do to you, for this is the law and the prophets," end quote, Matthew 7:12. This is Jesus's only commandment and a core tenet in all faiths. How can we exclude people that believe in the Golden Rule without excluding ourselves? Student trustees are representatives of the student body, and the student body is made of a diverse group that is not limited to Catholics. As a Catholic student trustee, it would be an honor to work alongside a non-Catholic student trustee at our board. At a Catholic school where we are taught that we are all God's people, it is our responsibility to uphold this and recognize the diverse perspectives that non-Catholics can provide, which can be used to enrich student life, student success, and the prosperity of our board community. The policy as it stands is exclusive, marginalizing, and disallows non-Catholic's voices to be heard, student trustee or not. This is a defining moment in our board where the Board of Trustees must decide whether it helps students of all backgrounds succeed or continue to hold them back. Amending Policy 126 to allow for non-Catholic student trustees is crucial in moving towards equity and prosperity as a board, end quote. Next will be Gabriella's statement, quote, "As a student trustee, one of my jobs is to represent the point of view of the students from our schools. After a lot of talking with peers and the Senate, I think it is clear that as a board, we should provide non-Catholic students a leadership opportunity like the position of student trustee. This way, we can have a clear and fair representation of students in our board. We need to recognize that non-Catholics can also do amazing things with a leadership opportunity such as this one. I think it is important for us to make the students inclusive, make the schools inclusive, and give everyone the opportunities that my peers beside me in class with a leadership role such as this one. I think it is only important for us to make the schools inclusive and give everyone the same opportunity, no matter what their faith is. It truly breaks my heart to know that I get more opportunities than my peers beside me in class just because of our difference in faith. In my opinion, I think that non-Catholic student leaders can be just as good as Catholic student leaders. It is time to show others that what being Catholic is all about, which is welcoming everyone since we are all God's children," end quote. I think those statements have said enough. I will now address the parents and students watching at home. In 2022, the term of Board of Trustees will expire, and there will be another election. If you are a Catholic Great Perry, meaning you have a child in HCDSB, or pay taxes to the Catholic Board, you are qualified to vote for the trustee who will represent your region. This includes non-Catholic Great Payers. If you do not like what you're witnessing from the board, you have the power to change it in 2022. And if the board wants additional insight as to how to enhance student leadership opportunities that are equitable and accessible to all according to the September 7th motion, you do not have to have a board-wide student census. You can simply listen to what the student body has been telling you and is telling you here and now. I will now pass the floor to last year's Burlington Region Student Trustee, Kirsten Kelly.
Thank you, Rahad. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Kelly, and tonight I would like to provide my perspective as a former student trustee here at Halton Catholic. You have heard from me, from student delegation, and last year's Student Senate of over 100 students, and yet no real change has been made. As Rahad has mentioned, many of my decisions during my term were heavily influenced by a variety of students, including that of numerous active non-Catholic students who provided me with their unique and diverse perspectives whilst working on different initiatives. This leadership position is ultimately not purely Catholic on its own, but has exhibited Catholic values because non-Catholic students are capable of uplifting and committing to Catholic values. Regardless of religion, it was my responsibility as a student representative to ensure I was properly representing not only Catholic students, but all students. However, the collection of uplifting these voices as a student trustee is nowhere near having the direct experience and opportunity of being a student trustee. Representing students as a student trustee has provided me with many opportunities that would not have been granted to me otherwise. In the last year, I have been able to connect and network with HCDSB staff, governmental members, and external youth advocacy groups. Such has allowed me the autonomy to work on initiatives to help represent students in our board, from bringing up different motions, giving different reports, and ultimately providing student perspective at a board-wide committees and/or meetings. In addition to board-wide connections, I have also been granted the chance to represent students across the province in my work at the Ontario Student Trustee Association, also known as AUSTA ECO. In AUSTA, I was elected as a public affairs coordinator, where my opportunities and network greatly increased. I was able to work with other student leaders across the province, work alongside governmental bodies, and connect with important figures from universities or well-known non-for-profit groups. Every involvement and initiative that I have worked on as a student trustee opened up opportunities for myself in the future. I can say to you that I would not have been granted half of the opportunities I have now if I had not been a student trustee. The role of a student trustee is far too different from that of a student senator or any other leadership position provided on the September 7th report for that matter. So yes, the opinions of non-Catholic students are indirectly brought up at the board level, but the voice they provide cannot compare to the opportunities that they are barred from. Back in June, this motion was to create the September 7th report was brought to the table because trustees noted the disparity in opportunities that non-Catholic students have. Yet the given report fails to provide an equitable solution to my non-Catholic student peers. I hope that the board reconsider's its decision, as given my own personal perspective and opinion as a former student trustee who has received numerous amazing opportunities. Non-Catholic students, advocates, and leaders deserve the same opportunities that myself and my Catholic peers have been granted. Halton Catholic, it is time to follow through with the slogan and help all of our peers realize their full potentials and helping them to better achieve, believe, and belong in their Catholic community.
Thank you, Ms. Barakat and Ms. Kelly. Are there any questions for clarification purposes, trustees? Vice Chair Dwork, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a clarifying question to our delegates, and I'd like to bring attention to page one in the last parol. You mentioned that Sudbury Catholic and Huron Catholic both allow non-Catholic student trustees, so I took a look at Sudbury Catholic Policy G60 and under qualification, first paragraph, it clearly states that the requirement that student trustees need to be Catholic. I also looked at the Huron Catholic policy entitled "Student Trustees," which is a very short, two-paragraph policy, and talks about the role of the school board to provide Catholic education to its students and cultivate and enrich new opportunities that deepens the faith of students. With this in mind, the board establishes the position of student trustees. So my question, Mr. Chair, is, I'd like a clarification on that particular statement from where we get this knowledge that the two boards are allowing Catholic and non-Catholic trustees?
Okay. Delegates, do you have that information, clarifying information?
Please give me a second to look over the documents I have of the Sudbury and Oakville School Board, and I will reply as soon as I have it. Thank you.
Certainly.
While I'm looking for it, because I have a lot of papers, please continue on with the questions.
Are there any other delegates who have questions, and then we can come back to Vice Chair Dwork's question? Trustee Antamasi?
Mr. Chair, you said delegates. Are you referring to trustees?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, trustees. Any other trustees have questions?
All right, thank you. So my question is to both former student trustee and others. So are you familiar with the Canadian Constitution where it states the following? "The duty to exercise the powers under the Education Act in a manner consistent with respectful of the denominational rights has been incorporated into the statutory duty in Section 1, Brackets 4.1 of the Education Act of Ontario, which applies to many persons, including trustees, of a Catholic school board's constitutional right and privileges." This Act, subsection 1, brackets 4, "This Act does not adversely affect any right or privilege guaranteed by Section 93 of the Constitution of 1867 or by Section 23 of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms." Are you familiar with that part of the Constitutional Act which allows?
Are you referring to just denominational rights as a whole? Because as mentioned, I have the Education Act right here. In terms of student trustees, what it states is the qualifications is a full-time pupil or an exceptional pupil in a special education program with whom the board has reduced the length of the institutional program on each school day under subsection. And two, despite succession, one, a person is not qualified to be elected or to act as a student trustee if he or she is serving a sentence of imprisonment or penal correctional institution. Three, a person who ceases to be qualified to act as a student trustee shall resign from the position. The Education Act brings up, again, nothing of being Catholic. Denominational rights are one thing, which is the right for Catholic schools to decide how their management runs and who they hire. Again, I'm sure Kirsten could talk more about that later. But as a board, nothing is stopping us from taking out this policy. It is not in the Constitution for student trustees to be Catholic in a Catholic board. It is well within your rights for you to keep it like that. However, nothing is stopping you from changing it.
Thank you. Trustee Antamasi, you have another question if you so desire?
So are you aware that Catholic trustees, there's only one definition for Catholic trustees, and the definition is that we serve our Catholic Great Payers. We, although we have an agreement with the Ministry of.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, trustee, trustee Antamasi, you're to ask a clarifying question, not enter into debate, so could you please form your question?
My question was, are they familiar with what I was quoting?
Trustee Kelly, would you like to answer that? Sorry, former trustee Kelly, a bad habit. My apologies.
No problem, Chair. And yes, we are familiar with the denominational right. I think Rahad summarized it perfectly. However, as mentioned in the report itself, the position of a student trustee does not inherently affect the role of a trustee itself, because the role of a trustee or an adult trustee or a municipally-elected trustee is very different from that of a student trustee, especially that being that our role is, our votes are non-binding, and we're just there to represent student voice, and the majority of students, or not the majority of students, but many students are non-Catholic, and that's why we're bringing up this delegation as a whole.
and that's why we're bringing up this delegation as a whole because of the representation or lack thereof in the student body. That's why we're decided to bring it up, because we do understand that trustees or municipally-elected trustees as a whole are supposed to be representing Catholics. But that is why we're not asking for that specific policy to be changed in regards to the municipally-elected trustees, but rather in regards to the students who are affected.
Thank you.
As you mentioned, Catholic trustees, as an adult trustee such as yourselves, must be Catholic because it is a job. It is part of the management position of our Board. It is part of the system of the Board. Student trustees have a non-binding vote, so they really have no pull as to how the management at our system works. Also, keep in mind, they are student leaders. They are not staff.
Ms. Barracca, do you have an answer to Vice Chair Dwork's question?
Not currently. However, I can email you PDFs probably in the upcoming week of that information, or I can bring it up in a letter of correspondence later on.
Thank you. Thank you. That'd be great. Trustees, do we have any other questions? Trustee DeRosa? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just a comment. This policy is available on the Board website. It's not necessary to email someone on the website. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very simple question. Is this, is this a discussion really on the adequacy or the ability of the current trustees that are elected democratically through the system as not being able to represent you?
Are you talking about the student trustees or the adult trustees?
I am specifically talking about the student trustees, which go through an election process currently.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think the student trustees right now are very qualified. They're definitely amazing leaders, and I agree that they deserve the spot that they won. However, what I disagree with is the fact that non-Catholics aren't able to run and have an equal opportunity to have positions such as these three very qualified student trustees, as there are qualified non-Catholic leaders that are very interested in that position. It's not to question the leadership of the student trustees we currently have, because as mentioned by the statements in our delegation, they're in support of this because they're listening to the student body.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have an additional question?
No, that was very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm so sorry. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to do this, so stop me if I'm not, but I'd like to just provide a little bit of perspective on trustee DeRosa's question before I ask my question.
To comment, add context, because you're not a presenter, but you can ask your question. Please feel free.
Okay. My question for Rahad and Kirsten, which is something that I know that we have talked about in senate, but just to enter it into the conversation, I think what's clear here is that students feel that there hasn't been any adequate steps taken to represent non-Catholic students in student leadership and advisory roles. So my question to you would be, if, say, the Board continually feels that this would be a breach of denominational rights, would you guys be open to potentially talking about alternative arrangements, including arranging an alternate position, not under the title of student trustee, but potentially with equal or some similar responsibilities and rights within the Board for non-Catholic students?
I think the first option would simply to be to allow non-Catholics to run for student trustee. However, what you mentioned, a role that is similar or the same as student trustee under a different title for non-Catholics, would also be beneficial because it would still be a bigger leadership role. Of course, when we're talking about that, we also have to ensure that that role provides at least a partial amount of the opportunities that the student trustee position does, such as being able to voice student concern on the Board level at attending these Board meetings, as well as that the honorarium that's provided and possibly being allowed to go to the Ontario Wide Students Trustee Association, because as Kirsten mentioned, that's a huge opportunity. If all of these things are provided to an equal separate role, then absolutely, but can they be provided?
Trustee Bowie, do you have an additional question?
No, thank you so much, Rahad.
Thank you. So seeing that there are no other questions, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item eight point one. We're moving on to item six, which is approval of the minutes of September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, regular Board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a mover to accept the minutes?
Trustee Agnew?
Move by trustee Agnew. Do we have a seconder?
O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien will go to recorded vote. Trustee Demossi?
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chernata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Close, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Dwork? Trustee Agnew? Oh, sorry, trustee Guzzo. I gotta stop doing that. Thank you. Apologies. Trustee Murphy's in favor. Six point one carries. Seven point one, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. The chart of information is available in our package. Action items, eight point one, response to delegations. In accordance with our bylaws and policy I zero six, delegation to the Board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to, number one, receive the delegation as information. Number two, defer the matter to a future meeting. Number three, request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting. And number four, make a decision today on this matter. I will now open the floor to any trustee who may wish to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with this delegation. I look at the list. It looks like trustee O'Brien is up first. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Through Mr. Chair, I move that we take the delegation as information.
Trustee O'Brien moves that we accept the delegation as information. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair Dwork, beat you to it. I'll open up the floor for discussions. Trustee O'Brien, since you moved, you may open the floor for discussions.
I have nothing to say, Mr. Chair. The delegation speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? We have quite a few hands up. We have trustee Agnew, then Vice Chair Dwork. Trustee Agnew, do you wish to speak to this?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not going to be in agreement with trustee O'Brien's motion to receive this as information. I, you know, given that this has come up repeatedly, given that we have had a delegation from our, from our students, once again, I would like to see my fellow trustees support sending this back to policy for a more fulsome discussion. You know, I do think it warrants having a bigger conversation. We have talked about issues around equity and equitable access to these opportunities, and given that we do have a significant proportion of our students in our secondary system who are not Catholic, I do believe that it warrants further conversation. And so I would like to see my trustees consider that. That would be my take on the matter. I understand there's a motion on the table. I'm just putting my two cents, and unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to support that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so we did have this delegation earlier, and we have a report on that. I know the students have come back with requests. However, we have a court case presently outstanding in another Board. I'd like to patiently wait and see the outcome of that because it could change a lot of things. I have the deepest regard for my student trustee sitting on the table with me, and I'd like to do something about it, but I'd like to be very patient and very careful, carefully share on this matter. And that's the reason I'd like to accept as information for now. Pending the outcome of the court case, which I will definitely accept wholeheartedly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'd like to say that I agree with trustee Duarte that in the case of the outstanding court case, it is potentially a factor that the Board should be prudent and potentially wait and see how that results. But I'd just like to emphasize to all trustees that I wholeheartedly am in support of the delegation by Rahad and former trustee Kelly. Trustee Tokiwa will touch on this within our student trustee report, but we recently had a senate meeting, and we had not one senator who voted opposed to sending a letter of support for this delegation to the Board, which is something that you will see in correspondence. And I think it's just very important, and I want to highlight to all trustees that, yes, you may accept this as information, but please do listen to our students. I know Rahad and the senate as a whole are very passionate about this, and I thank her for her hard work on this motion because it, or on this delegation, because it is something that is very important to our students, and it is something that we have seen. Our students discussed unanimous support for this letter, and we heard the concerns of many students surrounding this policy. So as a student trustee who does work to represent the student population, I'd just like to tell you all those facts as well, and please encourage you to accept what Rahad and former trustee Kelly have given to us today, but really ponder it and use it to inform your opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Up next, we have trustee Guzzo, then followed by trustee Tokiwa, followed by trustee DeRosa. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to reflect on as well what trustee Agnew said. Again, I'm not sure why we aren't listening to our students. If the Sudbury Board can do it, there's boards that can do it. There's no reason why we can't even turn our minds to this. This is, this is not reflective of what our student body is. And the fact is, is we continue to push back against these changes that we should be embracing and welcoming that people are embracing our Catholic education, yet we seem to keep pushing them away, and I don't understand it. And I think that this would have been perfect to have a full discussion on, because I think it's something that is worthwhile. And again, it's something that our students have asked for. I don't, I don't understand why we're all sitting here around the table if we refuse to listen to what our students have to say and what they're asking us to do, at least for us to explore it. And you know what? We have not done that. We have not done our due diligence. And I think that it's something that we as a Board really need to reflect on and not be scared of, but embrace. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Tokiwa, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that I do agree with trustee Agnew that I don't think that making this an information item is enough. I would like to thank Rahad and Kirsten for bringing this forward and putting so much work into and working so hard to represent the student voice. I do have one question. I'm not sure if trustee Duarte would like to answer it or if someone else would be able to. But how exactly will the results of the case regarding the York, the York case, how would that impact the future of this policy?
It's not necessarily appropriate for, to ask another trustee a question, but if Vice Chair Duarte would like to answer, I'll leave that up to him. It's his prerogative.
I'm sorry. It's my apology. I just wanted to-
No, that's okay. That's okay.
You had posed the question earlier.
Good question. Good question. Trustee Tokiwa, we have to be a little careful because this has an impact not only on our Board, but on the entire province. Each Board has their own policy right now, and it's going to impact everybody else. Okay, so we did see and we did hear that this case is before the Court, and I won't get into the details, but we have to protect it in law because others are precedent set. Okay, so we have to be extremely cautious, and whatever is the outcome, we are more than willing to support that wholeheartedly, or we can come up with some different solution, right? But we need to work together. Thank you.
Trustee Tokiwa, did you have a follow-up?
No, thank you so much, trustee Duarte.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the points I wanted to make generally got made. I want to thank the trustees for, the student trustees, Ms. Bacharat and Ms. Kelly, or former student trustee Ms. Kelly, for the excellent presentation as usual. I think I want to voice trustee Duarte is erring on the side of caution. This is an issue that will have province-wide implications, and I think we need to listen to the arguments that are being made from all sides. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Demossi, you have the floor.
I would just like to add that perhaps we need to keep in mind that the fact that Catholic trustees under the Education Act, the municipal acts, are protected by the Canadian, the denominational rights within the Canadian Constitution. Boards only write policies that are in keeping with federal, provincial, and municipal regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Dwork. I would like to speak to this matter. I think it's important to note that we're not saying all things, all things Catholic are good, all things non-Catholic are not good. It's, it's not deniable. We have the right to make the decision and to, the policy is lawful. But that really is not the question. Just because we have the right to make that decision, is it the right decision? Is it the right policy? Does it serve our students well? Is it equitable? What message is the policy sending? Is it consistent with our Catholic teachings? I think there is a compromise, and, and I think there's a compromise in light of, yes, there is a potential legal ruling coming down, but there is, I think, a compromise such as was, was put on the table before of having, creating a unique position, and then depending on the court case, if that transitions into changing our policy, then, then so be it. So, you know, we have to acknowledge that there's a significant number of non-Catholic students within our Board, and we need to make sure that they're represented well. We know that the role of the student trustee is to inform trustees, and that is to be done Catholic, through Catholic education, through a Catholic lens. And obviously, if you're not Catholic, it's more difficult to do that. But in essence, if, if the majority of trustees, student trustees are Catholic, then we can ensure that happens. You know, we're living in a different age when, when these laws and rules were established. Nobody had the notion that we would attract so many non-Catholic students to our system, and that's wonderful. That shows you there's value in what we're doing. It really, if we need to, any indication of why we exist is because there's a demand from so many people who are non-Catholic who see value in our system and want to participate. I see there's a countdown clock. Are you supposed to pay attention to that? Sorry, different matter. So, so I think, I think it, it warrants further discussion. I think there's a compromise. I think there is action that we can do to keep this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Moving on, trustee Guzzo.
She spoke already. Trustee O'Hanlon Churnata.
Trustee O'Hanlon Churnata.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair.
It's my turn to speak, Mr. Chair. I have a question.
Trustee Guzzo, come back to you. Trustee O'Hanlon Churnata, go ahead.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just the past discussion that we've had leads me to believe that we have to have more discussion on this topic. So I will not be supporting as receiving this as information. Excuse me, I think in our well-spoken delegation, it was also indicated that she's willing to talk about, you know, some sort of a compromise rather than the full what she's asking for. So I think it's in our best interest and our best, students' best interest to continue this conversation and bring it back to policy, if that's where it needs to be, and continue this conversation as to what is the right thing to do, and so that we can compromise to have the student voice heard fully so we can make decisions based upon that and make people feeling belonging within our schools regardless of their faith.
Thank you, trustee Churnata. Trustee Guzzo, come back to you. Trustee Guzzo.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chair. I heard Chair Murphy make a comment about is it equitable and is it right for our students? I guess my question would be is do we feel that this is equitable? I, I hear, I hear being brought around charter rights, and we all know what is protected, what grounds are protected under the Human Rights Code. And I'm pretty sure it doesn't say that, that, you know, anything to do with student achievement and student body. So I guess my question is, is, is this equitable? And I don't know if Director Daley can answer that or somebody can answer. Do we feel that we are being equitable?
Okay, I'll ask Director Daley if you want to jump in or?
Thank you through, Mr. Chair. The question of whether it's equitable, I guess, is, that's a question that each trustee could ask themselves. If trustee Guzzo is asking me from a legal perspective, is it equitable? I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer that. I do know that the position of student trustee is part of our governance model in our school board. So, so that, that may speak to the ability of a board to determine the qualifications, or actually does speak of the ability of a board to determine qualifications for their students. But I think as, as Chair Murphy pointed out, that, that's an option for the board to decide. And that's, because the role of student trustee is part of the governance structure, that's an important thing to consider.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I, I just, I appreciate it. And maybe that's, you know, we know that it's going to be, it's being challenged legally, and I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't try to, to be ahead of that and as opposed to, you know, waiting out the storm.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Trustee Agnew, go hand up. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Just, I'm just, well, I do have a question. But I'm, I'm also curious, do you need to hand the gavel back? Or is trustee Murphy not done?
No, I think the gavel seems to be to land off this. You're burying me.
Okay, no problem. Just wanted to be sure. Um, so I, I'm, I just wanted to comment. I am encouraged by these conversations. I think it's important that we do continue to acknowledge the importance of what our students are asking for. We've heard tonight from our student trustees as well that there has been no opposition to supporting a non-trustee or a non-Catholic student running for student trustee. And, and while I appreciate the value of compromise, and I do think that it has a place, there are certain times it does not have a place in, in my humble opinion, and I believe a token role is one of those situations. You know, it's either equal or it's not. And to say that we're going to, you know, possibly create an alternative position for a non-student, a non-Catholic student to have some sort of leadership opportunity, again, I'm all for leadership opportunities, but not when it's a asterisk beside it, if you will. So I do hope that this is not the end of this conversation. I hope that we can strive towards equality. I hope that we can strive towards equitable access for our non-Catholic trust, students to have these opportunities as they have so eloquently expressed that they would like to be considered for. And so, you know, please let's keep this in mind. And further to what trustee Guzzo has said, that's all well and good that this is before the courts for somebody else, but back to a comment from one of our student trustees, what does that mean to us? Frankly, I don't think it means anything to us. There's no reason why we can't make a decision that is important for our students, what they have asked for, what we would like to see happen, regardless of what is happening with another board in the court system right now. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I think that's a good idea, but it could be created through another, through another motion. So I have no hands up, so I'll take it to a vote. I'll call the vote.
Mr. Chair, can I just close, please?
Sorry? Oh, yes. I'm forgetting. Trustee O'Brien, you get to close.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank our students for a most energizing, energizing presentation. There's a lot of information there. I just think we all need it. Could take it back and digest it so we can make a full, thoughtful decision moving forward. Thank you. And if you just take it to a vote, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. We have the motion to accept this information. Trustee O'Brien and seconded by trustee Duarte. I'll now take it to trustee Agnew.
I'm completely opposed.
Trustee De Rosa.
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed. Absolutely opposed.
Trustee Yandamasi.
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella. We'll come back to trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hanlon Churnata.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie.
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar.
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
The chat box.
Oh, trustee Carabella is in favor.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Sorry for interrupting. Trustee Carabella just.
Yes, yes, I saw that trustee De Rosa. I saw trustee De Rosa. And trustee Duarte is in favor. The motion carries. It's five to four.
I just, I was asked to tell, tell the board that trustee Carabella is, is been knocked out, and she's trying to get back in. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we see it in the chat.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee De Rosa. It's in the chat. I'm going to hand the gavel back to Chair Murphy.
Thank you. Thank you for that firm grip on the gavel by chair Duarte.
Thank you.
Eight point two, naming of the virtual Catholic elementary school. Superintendent Danofel, would you like to speak to this motion, speak to this and read the motion?
Superintendent Danofel. Sorry, sorry about that. Through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to inform trustees of the response from Bishop Crosby on the selection of the name for the new virtual Catholic elementary school. Following the regular board meeting on September 21st, 2021, Director Daley forwarded the attached letter to Bishop Crosby, which included the prioritized list of names for the virtual Catholic elementary school. Bishop Crosby has responded with his approval of the name for the new virtual Catholic elementary school to be St. Clair Viscici Elementary School and provided feedback on the alternative name Brother Carlos Acutus. The response from Bishop Crosby is Appendix B. The following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Be resolved that the Carlton Catholic District School Board approved the name St. Clair Viscici Catholic Elementary School for our virtual Catholic elementary school.
Thank you, Superintendent Danofel. Can I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew.
I'll move trustee Guzzo.
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Guzzo. Do we have any questions, any discussion? Nope, seeing that they're, oh, trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Question to supervisory officer Danofel. Has the Vatican not already established that Carlo Acutus is the internet saint? So why are we changing that? Why are we not implementing what's already been handed down by the sees of Rome through our Pope? Just wondering.
Superintendent Danofel, do you have insight?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Intomasi. Thank you for your question, trustee Intomasi. Trustee Intomasi, the Vatican has named Blessed Carlos Acutus, sort of like the patron of technology and is, is more current. Having said that, like Bishop Crosby even identifies this in his letter. But as we follow the policy and procedure with naming a school, we do take it to stakeholders' feedback. And as, as you can see through the attachments from this whole process that we went through, through the summer for naming the Catholic virtual school, we took stakeholders' feedback, and we got an astounding response in terms of responding to the surveys throughout the summer. And what the stakeholders have asked is that the naming for the virtual school is St. Clair Viscici. So the committee has made that decision to bring forward to, to the board and to Bishop Crosby. So that's why the name St. Clair Viscici was our first name and Blessed Carlos Acutus are alternate.
Okay, but just to cut. Thank you, trustee Intomasi. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. Actually, the Pope had recognized Carlo Acutus as the saint of the internet. That's a very specific term, very specific title. I would want to move to amend that particular motion and to put forward Carlo Acutus, 15-year-old, very much a person that speaks to our genera, to the young generation who are the ones that are on the, are in the intern, on the internet. And as such, I would look for a seconder to change that motion.
Do we have a, do we have a seconder to amend this motion, changing the name?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. So we're going to start a second speaker's list regarding that amendment. So moved by trustee Intomasi, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustee Intomasi, you can open discussion on this matter.
It's very simple. Who are we to change what the Vatican has already established as the saint of the internet? Carlo Acutus, 15 years old. He did very much on the internet as it pertains to Catholic thought, to Catholic religion, and ultimately Catholic education. As such, I would ask my colleagues to support a young person as opposed to, what year was St. Clair Viscici, when did she die?
Hundreds of years ago. Let's put it that way.
Exactly. So the point being is that we need to make this current. The internet is something current, and I believe that Carlo is current and the Vatican has deemed him so. Thank you.
Thank you. On the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Hern Churnata, trustee Guzzo, trustee Agnew, and trustee Bowie. Trustee O'Hern Churnata, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be very short and sweet here. I was on the committee, and with all due respect, we followed the procedure, and our bishop has approved the name. So if our bishop thought it might be an issue in Rome, I'm sure he would not have written the letter of approval. So I'm absolutely against the amendment. We followed the process, and this way is circumventing what our stakeholders want and what our bishop has approved.
Thank you, trustee, trustee.
Actually, the.
Sorry, that's, the point of order is not for you to debate or provide a rebuttal. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I too will not be supporting.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think you got to recognize there's a point of order, and you got to address it.
I ruled, I ruled on the point of order.
Hold, hold on a second.
Order, order.
You didn't say point of order.
Enough, enough. I ruled on the point of order, and then I handed the floor to trustee Guzzo.
Why does the point of order, Mr. Chair?
The point of order was trustee Intomasi was then entering into debate. That's not an opportunity to enter into debate.
I was making, I was making a statement based on.
Again, that is not a point.
I.
That is not a point of order. A point of, trustee Intomasi, you are out of order. I have the floor. You do not make a statement as a point of order. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I will not be supporting this motion. I'm not sure why we think we can go outside of following policy and procedure, all the time and work that are, the committee put in to, and getting information from our stakeholders in naming. And then the fact that we go to Bishop Crosby to ask for his, his approval on this, and then we saw it and received it, and now we're going to say, oh, by the way, we don't want it? I, I just don't understand. I just don't understand the rationale, and I could not support this. The fact is, is I appreciate all the work that the committee did in this and Superintendent Danofel for bringing it forward. And there will never be a time where I go against what stakeholders have brought to this board table. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, and I don't want to beat that dead horse, but I too am confident in the work that the committee did. They undertook the task. They were clear on their mandate. They followed the process and the policy on that. They came up with some fantastic names. We got our stakeholder feedback. I will not ignore stakeholder feedback. We had this discussion already. We approved the name. They went to the bishop, who then approved it. And now before us, we have the opportunity to finalize a name for our virtual Catholic elementary school. So why we would at this juncture decide to try to make a change is beyond me. When we followed all those processes, we've heard from the people who were involved in the committee, and we've heard from the bishop. And so for those reasons, I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, I see your hand up. I just wanted to ask trustee Bowie. I saw your response of 1253, which, which thank you for the research. Did you also want to speak to this matter, or you just wanted to provide that answer?
Yes, I can speak to it. The reason I know that answer is because I actually studied St. Clair Viscici prior to my confirmation as a part of, you know, choosing our patron saint for our confirmation. And as much as I appreciate that Blessed Carlo Acutus, we also studied him in school. I appreciate the connection between him and the virtual space. I don't think that St. Clair of Viscici is by any means a bad choice. She was the first woman to write monasteric guidelines, I think. And I will say that I'm sure that students would be just as happy with her, given that stakeholder feedback produced that. I'm sure that students would be just as happy having her on their name of their virtual school as they would Blessed Carlo, Carlo Acutus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, really, my issue is not, is not necessarily the choice because I think there, the choice comes with recommendations from better people than me in, in these matters. But I would ask you, Mr. Chair, in the fairness of the assembly, and we are all equal around the table, I think you should at least give trustee Intomasi the opportunity to state his point of order because I'd like to listen to what he has to say, and I'm sure other trustees would like to. Thank you.
Thank you. So trustee, so trustee. Thank you. So trustee, so trustee, enough, enough. Trustee Antomasi said that he wanted to make a statement. A statement is not a point of order. Trustee Antomasi has the opportunity to close. He has three minutes to close where he could rebut anything somebody has said or provide further clarity to his point. That was my ruling. Is there any other trustees who would like to speak to this matter?
No?
Just a point of clarification. That's it.
Yes.
Okay. I think I heard trustee Antomasi invoke a point of order. That's what I heard.
I ruled on the point of order. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor to close.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, you did not because you didn't allow me to finish. The point that I was going to make is that the information that was being provided by trustee O'Hern Zernata was incorrect. That is a point of order. But I will proceed with why I'm advocating for Carlo Acutus. Our former trustee Nick asked me, because it was his will and during his term as trust, student trustee, it was his choice that Carlo Acutus be recognized as the name for our school. In keeping with that, I took it upon myself to advocate on his behalf. As such, I'm asking our trustees to consider Bishop Crosby would approve either name. He was merely reflecting what the majority of our stakeholders responded to. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to a recorded vote. Again, we're voting just on the amendment, which is changing the name from St. Clair of Assisi to Blessed Carlos Acutus. Trustee O'Brien, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Zernata?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Ammar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa? Trustee Tokiwa, are you there? We'll come back. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair. I think recognizing a young man...
Thank you. I need, just need your vote. Just need your vote. Vice Chair Duer? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy is opposed. The amendment fails.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry. I misunderstood. I did not know that we were voting on the amendment. I'd like to change my vote to opposed if possible.
Okay, we, it's, the vote has closed and we can't change it, but we do know...
Point of privilege, trustee Murphy. You forgot to ask me.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Carabella. My apologies. How do you vote?
I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you. So the amendment fails. We're back to the original motion. The original motion was moved by, do we have any, any other questions on the original motion? If not, trustee Agnew moved the motion. She, she will be able to close. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor to close?
I, I am fully in support of this motion and I hope that the trustees can support this motion that has been put before us, that has been approved by the bishop, that has been, that has been selected by stakeholders and the committee that was involved. I think it's a great name and I look forward to having this name done and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Hern Zernata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Ammar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Duer? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Abstain, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. The motion carries. Moving on to 8.3. I would like to apologize if I have cut off trustees abruptly and have used curt language. I'm trying to make sure we stay on the road and avoid the ditches. So if I have offended anybody by my curt responses, I'll try to be more delicate in the future. 8.3, HCDSP procedural bylaw review. Trustee Guzzo, would you like to speak to this matter and read the motion?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Can I just ask that it be put up because I'm having really real issues with my internet where I'm at?
Can you, trustee Guzzo, can you see it or did you want, did you want me to read the motion?
I can't see it. It's not on the screen yet for us.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, just of procedural?
Yes, trustee De Rosa?
Is Mr. Kapoor present at the meeting or in any way, shape, or form?
As far as I'm aware, he is. Parliamentary Kapoor, are you, are you on?
I am, Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, with no reflection on Mr. Kapoor, but I think he should probably reclusive himself from this, this discussion.
He's, he is an advisor. He's actually not involved with the discussion?
But...
It's a public...
Isn't the motion, isn't the motion regarding, regarding the awarding of a contract to him, Mr. Chair?
Which is being livestreamed. Yes. It's not, he's not, we're not awarding a contract from where engagement is.
I raise it, I raise it for your consideration. It's your decision.
Okay. I, I do not see, so I'll give you my opinion. I don't, I do not see a conflict with it considering he is our sanctioned parliamentarian for the board, which was done under, under an action item and voted on by the majority of the trustees.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Can you please provide us with a date when that motion was taken?
No, I, no, I cannot. You were at, you were at the meeting.
Being appointed parliamentarian for Halton Catholic District School Board, the last correspondence would have been to Kapoor.
Yeah. So trustee, trustee Antomasi, I'll rule on your point of order. No, I do not have the date.
I haven't given you my point of order, Mr. Chair.
It was in October.
All right. It was never approved that we would continue with a two-step process.
It actually, yes. So trustee Antomasi, trustee Antomasi, you're entering into debate. You, you have a point of order. Trustee Antomasi, this is your second warning and your final warning. You are out of order. You had a point of order. I ruled on the point of order.
What was my point of order and how did you rule?
Your point of order was you wanted the date where it was voted on. I told you I did not have that date handy. Then you entered into debate. This conversation is over. I ruled. It's final. Trustee Guzzo?
I appeal that, I appeal that ruling.
We'll go to a vote. We're, so trustee O'Brien has appealed my point of order of overruling trustee Antomasi. Trustee Bowie, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Ammar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
I oppose.
Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa?
Mr. Chair, I have to step away. My apologies. What are we voting on?
We're voting on an appeal by trustee O'Brien overruling my, my position on trustee Antomasi's point of order.
I vote in favor of trustee O'Brien.
Vice Chair Duer? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
I'm going to abstain. I'm not sure what's happening. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernata?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's opposed. The appeal fails. Trustee Guzzo, are you prepared to read the motion? If not, I can read it for you.
Yeah, I, and Mr. Chair, go ahead and read it and I'll just...
Okay.
Thank you.
Whereas an organization's bylaws provide the framework to guide and facilitate effective board meetings and sound decision-making at the board table. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board, procedural bylaws are to be reviewed every four years as per bylaw 14.2. Whereas our procedural bylaws were up for review in the 2020, 2021 review cycle. Whereas we have received feedback from multiple sources suggesting that our procedural bylaws are inconsistent and need of review. Be it resolved that we forward the HCDSP procedural bylaws to parliamentarian Atul Kapoor to review and provide recommendations to trustees at future policy meetings. This was moved by trustee Guzzo. Do we have a second there?
O'Brien, I will second that.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor to open.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm going to keep this really short and sweet. The fact is, is as we can see, we have difficulties in, in our procedures and following procedures and bylaw. There never seems to be an agreement, even when we do get opinions on it and the decisions are made, they're constantly raised and brought up again. We have items in our bylaws that refer to items that don't exist. We have areas that are contradictory. One area says one thing, another says another. And our procedural bylaws really are a part of our meetings and productive, smooth meetings and provide the, the stage and the groundwork for all of us being able to follow. And so that they're in question and we are able to move the business of the board in a, in a timely and efficient manner. So I ask you trustees, you know, I, I think having parliamentarian Kapoor have a review of them and making recommendations for us to have a look at, I think it's a step in the right direction. Thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. So on the speaker's list, we have trustee Antomasi, Carabella, O'Brien, and De Rosa. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask parliamentarian Kapoor if he feels he can adequately marry the, our procedural bylaws with the Education Act, with municipal guidelines and provincial laws.
Parliamentary Kapoor? Yes, trustee, vice chair Duer?
Mr. Chair, this is a meeting for the board of trustees. Parliamentarian Kapoor is just a visitor. I think the discussions will stay within the trustees.
I, I will, I think...
To the topic history.
So trustee Antomasi, trustee Antomasi, the preceding officer will make the decision of the meeting, not you. I will allow trustee Antomasi's question. I think, I'm assuming that parliamentarian Kapoor will qualify because not of all of those stipulations in the question are actually in the motion. But parliamentarian Kapoor, you have the floor. And again, it's yours, and it's your prerogative to answer the question or not. What's your point of order, trustee O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, I totally agree with your not asking parliamentarian Kapoor to leave the meeting, but in engaging in, him in this question that you are permitting, are you not abetting him in possibly an act of conflict of interests? This peculiar interest is at stake here.
Not considering that we're paying for his services right now, so we would be paying for additional services. And I think it's prudent to understand and not to try and engage somebody in something that they may not be capable of. So I think it's, I think it's of value to hear from parliamentarian Kapoor himself and then he will either instill that level of confidence in trustees or, or won't.
But yeah, won't means the outcome of this add to...
Sorry, sorry, trustee, trustee O'Brien, we're, this is not a discussion, debate. That was my ruling.
You began the debate, Mr. Chair.
Trust, trustee, trustee O'Brien, I ruled, my ruling was the reason why I'm making that decision. So you can appeal that decision. As you're well aware, that is my decision. I'm going to allow the question provided parliamentarian Kapoor wishes to answer.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
What's your point of order, trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for affording me the time to express it here. I think we're, we're going down a slippery slope in the area...
Trustee De Rosa, your point of order has to be a rule that's broken. It can't be your opinion. You'll have opportunity later to express your opinion. So if your...
I will not argue it. I will not argue it. Let's proceed.
Thank you. Parliamentary Kapoor, you're, you're free to answer trustee Antomasi's question if you so wish.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think I'll limit myself to a couple of points. One is that some of the questions that are asked go beyond what I would see as the terms of the motion, which is to review and provide recommendations. I would, I would state at the outset that I am not a lawyer, as I've repeatedly said, sometimes even proudly said. And one of my recommend, one recommendation that I would give and that I give to all clients who are, when I, when I assist them with bylaws or review their bylaws, would be that whatever comes out of their decisions should be reviewed by a lawyer. I'm going to limit myself to that, I think.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. So given that this has to go from a parliamentarian and then to legal counsel so as to marry all the legislative overrides on our bylaws, because the bylaws by themselves are not backed by statute, that it would seem to me that we would be duplicating the services. As such, I would think that sending this to a legal firm that has the capacity to have both a lawyer in conjunction with his or her duty as parliamentarian, then it would only, it would only seem that it's appropriate to go to a law firm as opposed to having this go through two steps.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I want to bring up is that there was a motion in May 19, 2020 in which we established an ad hoc committee, bylaw review committee. And my understanding is that a motion such as this, where we are debating what to do with the bylaws next, would have proceeded from the ad hoc committee. And we would have had a, a meeting about wanting to do this and have, send it off maybe for an RFP or, you know, to different people and get some quotes and, and then make a motion on who we finally decide. So I'm not understanding why this wouldn't have been done through our committee, our ad hoc committee, and that that would be the proper route. So I think we should start our ad hoc committee and, and fulfill that motion from May 19, 2020.
Thank you for, for that, trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank trustee Guzzo for bringing up this excellent, excellent motion. And the choice is very, very... is very, very good. I, I really feel good about that. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know, is, um, Ms. Dan on standby tonight still? Mr. Chair?
Uh, oh, sorry. I'm not sure if Dan is still, uh, in the meeting. Dan, are you with us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, he is not.
He's not, okay.
No worries. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forward an amendment to this.
Okay. What is your amendment?
I sent to Rosie. She could just pull it up on the screen.
Then we'll share, I think, in the chat box. Oh, no, she's got it. Okay, perfect.
So, Mr. Chair, it is a strikeout and insert and, uh, it's a strikeout, um, although it is a good motion. And the assertion would be, be it resolved that the H C D S B procedural bylaw review be put out for a request for tender and brought back as an action item for the November second board meeting.
Uh, okay. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so amendment is moved by trustee O'Brien. It is seconded by trustee De Rosa. Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor to open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, though it is clear that our bylaws are in dire need of review, and then this has been pending for some time now, to the point where it is an emergency, the fact remains that it has been an emergency for at least the last three years. To take a few extra weeks to find the best person for this job is worth those extra few weeks. I know that Mr. Kapoor has done an excellent job at being our parliamentarian. His calm professional demeanor mixed with professional accuracy has been the greatest benefit to us. And he may be the one for the job. But can we really rest until we at least put it out of, out for tender? Uh, that would be fair to all of us as well as to Mr. Kapoor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. So we have a new speaker's list for the amendment. Is there any trustees who wish to speak to this? Uh, I don't, so trustee De Rosa, is that your hand up for this, for the amendment?
Uh, yes, it is, Mr. Chair. I think that, uh, the importance of this issue, um, this issue has been out to, to, uh, voice, uh, trustee O'Brien's has been out, uh, for three years now almost, and, uh, we all recognize the importance of this. Uh, there is certainly debate as to, um, whether this is best approach from a legal perspective. Um, and these are serious things we gotta consider. I don't, uh, we want to do a fulsome review of our, uh, policies and we want to make sure that they're legally compliant. So it would stand to reason for me that, uh, that this, the importance of this thing is, uh, requires an R F P. Uh, with all due respect to the job that, uh, Mr. Kapoor has been doing so far, um, he served us, uh, he's serving us, um, uh, you know, according to what he's been asked to do, so, um, I would strongly support this amendment, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak to the amendment?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a, a point of privilege. I, I, and, and I think you're gonna have to ask the parliamentarian to, to provide you with the advice. So we undertook a process by which we were reviewing the bylaws. That process was not completed. So currently, we still have a motion on the table which we're working on. It's been uncompleted. It would seem to me that we would have to rescind that particular motion in order to move forward with this particular new motion. Can you please ask parliamentarian?
So I'll take, I'll take that as a question. It's not a point of privilege, but that is a valid question.
It is a point of privilege.
Trustee Antomasi, trustee Antomasi, would you like me to rule against your point of privilege or accept it as a question? It's not a point of privilege. A point of privilege is something that affects the comfort and safety of the group. Uh, parliamentary Kapoor, could you please comment on, uh, trustee Antomasi's question that there is an open, uh, action item that, um, uh, needs to be resolved and, and is in conflict with this motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have called up the particular minutes of that, of the May nineteen, twenty twenty meeting, and I am going to read you motion one eleven dash slash twenty. That a bylaw working committee be struck involving all trustees, the director of the board, and other superintendents as resources to meet a half hour prior to every policy meeting prior to the June nine, twenty twenty review of bylaws. A third party will be brought at the agreement of the trustees into advise as required. It's, um, whether that third party would, uh, that sentence, a third party will be brought at the agreement of the trustees into advise as required. Whether that motion, whether that sentence in the past motion would accommodate this motion is a judgment call that I am going to leave to you as the chair. It's, uh, you understand why I'm, why, uh, I'm not gonna make, give an opinion on that. That is purely a judgment call. And, uh, and that would be a, that should be in your hands, Chair.
Okay. Uh, I think it, I think so. Let me, so let me respond to that first trustee De Rosa and then, uh, I can, uh, ask you what, uh, what you wanted to say. So to me, so to me, it, it meets the spirit of that original motion, which was to bring in a third party to assist in the areas, uh, where we needed, uh, direction and help. So in my view, it's, uh, and this will be going back to our policy committee, which is a committee of the whole. Uh, therefore, therefore, even though it, it seems sloppy and, and chunky, it, to me, it, it meets the spirit of what we're trying to achieve. Trustee Antomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
Mr. Chair, I think you, uh, you told me that I was up.
Oh, well, actually, well, there are other, so trustee De Rosa, there's other people who wish to speak to this amendment. You've already spoke to this amendment. You can ask a question when I get to you, but your, your, uh, opportunity for debate is over. So I'll put you on.
I'm not debating. I, I have a question.
I will put you on the speaker's list, trustee, trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa.
I was next, that's all.
Trustee De Rosa, no, I did not. I said I will come to you and ask you what your, trustee De Rosa, we are not playing this game. Order. Trustee De Rosa, you are out of order. You are out of order. What I said to you was, trustee De Rosa, what I said to you was, once I respond to trust, to parliamentary Kapoor, I will ask you what your question is. Trustee De Rosa? This is your second, trustee De Rosa, this is your second and final warning. You are out of order. You're on the speaker's list after trustee O'Hern Trenata and trustee Guzo. Trustee O'Hern Trenata, you have the floor.
I, I thought I had a, a follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you do. My apologies. Please proceed, trustee Antomasi.
So actually, parliamentarian Kapoor hasn't responded to my question. In order for us to continue with a, a new process, we have to finish the old process. The original motion does not speak to the motion that's in front of us now. What we would need to do is either amend something previously adopted, which would then require a two-thirds majority. That's what's on the table at, right now as we speak.
So parliamentary Kapoor, if I understand, uh, the advice you had given, the advice you had given was that this motion in conjunction with what has been previously passed, uh, would seem to satisfy that previous motion. Is that correct or am I putting words into your mouth?
Uh, with respect, Chair, you are putting words in my mouth. I, I, I read you the motion and I, uh, and I left it entirely at your discretion as appropriate to decide whether this motion was, whether the current motion was, uh, in conflict with the motion passed in May of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. I do not see it as being in conflict.
This is, Mr. Chair, this is an amendment to the original motion. In order to amend an original motion, the parliamentarian can rule on this.
This, this is, this trustee, trustee Antomasi. You do not have the floor. Trustee Antomasi, I ruled. You do not have the floor. I made my ruling. Trustee O'Hern Trenata, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I appealed your ruling.
Okay, we'll go to a recorded vote, uh, on the appeal. Trustee O'Hern Trenata, how do you, uh, vote?
I'm opposed.
Opposed. Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Vice chair Dour?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzo?
Opposed.
Uh, but, uh, trustee Antomasi?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy is opposed, so the appeal fails. Trustee O'Hern Trenata, you have the floor.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. That required a two-third majority.
It does, it does not. That was an appeal, uh, to a simple majority. Trustee O'Hern, trustee, trustee Antomasi, trustee Antomasi, you're out of order. You do not have the floor. Trustee O'Hern Trenata has the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and just to, uh, trustee, um, to anyone that can answer this question on the amendment. Uh, the proposed date of November the second, I believe it is. I'm not quite sure in a technical way if that's enough time to, to get through an R F P. So I'm wondering if someone can answer that question for me.
Um, Mr. Chair?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Director Daley, I know that typically an R, so trust, trustee O'Brien, you do not have the floor.
It's not a, it's not R F P.
Oh, try, it's fine. It's as, on the, on the, uh, the way it's written on the amendment, trust, uh, Director Daley, in your opinion, is there enough time to generate, uh, requests for tenders and get them back to us?
And, and I miss, maybe I'll answer the question with a question, um, and it's a question for clarification to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, I'm assuming you're using, um, the, the term request for tender, uh, as a specific request. So, um, I don't think you've confused it with an R F P. It's a, it's a request for tender, um, which, uh, is a, a more expedite or could be a more expeditious process than a full R F P.
Uh, is that your intent, trustee O'Brien, that it was a request for tender as you indicated, uh, not a, an R F P, which is a very specific procedure with our board?
Thank you for asking that, Director Daley. That is my intent. It is not an R F P. It is a request for tender, which is much more, which is much quicker. Uh, and my understanding is that it isn't a long process and we are just looking for pri, a price list. That's my, what, what I got from my understanding of it. But it is not an R F P.
Uh, trustee, uh, O'Hern Trenata, do you have a follow-up?
No, I do not, and thank you for the clarifications.
Trustee Guzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I just, I, I just wanna go back and just say, and it's really loud where I'm at, so I'm gonna be quick. Um, a lot of these things we've already gone through and discussed. This actually does, isn't contradictory to the motion that we already have on the floor. Um, if we recall, it was, you know what, Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna sit. I can't, it's too loud.
Uh, trustee De Rosa, do you have a question?
I do have a, a question. Um, did we not back at the time when we passed the motion, uh, start going down a, uh, request for proposal? Uh, we actually put forward potential suppliers, but it never, uh, got followed through. So the clear intent of that motion at the time was, in effect, to put it to tender or to put it to an R F P, whichever, whichever, uh, one you use. And I think if we dust up our own emails, I can come up with a proposal that I put in myself at the time and, uh, like others as well. So what we really.
So that's your question. Okay, so I will, I will ask the chair of our policy committee. I don't recall us putting it out for, uh, any requests or entertaining any names for that, that. Do you, uh, trustee Guzo, do you have a recollection of that? No, we did not. Okay.
Well, I'd bet to differ, Mr. Chair, but the, the, the track record will, will prove me right or wrong. But in the, in the end, um, that motion also addressed the creation of a committee.
Okay, so trustee, trustee De Rosa, you've already spoke to this matter. Trustee De Rosa, you've already spoke to this matter. You're allowed to ask clarifying questions.
I'd like a clarifying question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Was it not true that the motion at the time contemplated the creation of a committee of the whole with every, or a, uh, not a committee with all trustees, separate and independent from the policy committee?
Yes, so we've, we've already answered this and my reply was that this motion is not, uh, in, does not contravene the other motion. It complements it and, um, is not in conflict with it. That's, that's how I ruled.
So which one prevails? The one that's been passed, I would think.
The one that, this, again, this is not in conflict. This enhances or adds to that motion. It's not in conflict.
Mr. Chair, that's an amendment, point of order. So if you're amending, then you have to go through the process.
Trustee Antomasi, trustee Antomasi, we already ruled on this, on this matter. Uh, seeing there's nobody else who wishes to speak, trustee O'Brien, you may close.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and I want to again thank trustee Guzo for bringing this forward. A parliamentarian is an excellence, excellent suggestion. Matter of fact, here in Robert's Rules on page five, six, 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 it does say that bringing in a parliamentarian is a good, good choice for, um, for bylaws. Again, looking back at, um, our history of our board, it's not an R F P, remember that. It is a request for tender. We've done this before for architects, I believe, um, superintendents, you can correct me. I believe we did it for one psychologist. So to do it right now is not a bad idea, and I think even, um, we will feel better about the decision. Two, three weeks will just make us feel better all around and I, I bet you it'll be a, a much stronger decision as a board if we just put it out for tender now. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if you take it to a vote, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor.
Vice chair Dour?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi? Trustee Antomasi? We'll come back to trustee Antomasi. Trustee Carabella? Okay, how do you vote, trustee, uh, Antomasi?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Abstained.
Uh, trustee Murphy is opposed. The amendment fails. Going back to the original motion. Uh, trustee Guzo, you have the floor to close.
Uh, I have nothing left to say, Chair Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee De Rosa.
Before you vote, uh, a recorded vote, could you please check with the parliamentarian whether this requires a two-thirds majority or a simple majority, given that it's a new motion and we're reviewing bylaws? The process of reviewing bylaws requires two-thirds?
Uh, we're actually not reviewing the bylaw. This motion is to engage the services of a parliamentarian to provide us with a report. The review of the bylaws happened at the policy committee. Trustee Antomasi, why are you talking over me? I have. I have the floor. Trustee Intomasi, I have the floor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, I'll ask for your advice on this matter as well.
Chair, this motion does not by itself amend the bylaws. So, uh, it would, a majority vote would be, uh, would be required for this motion.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa, how do you vote?
Mr. Chair, sorry, Mr. Chair, I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, trustee Carabella, do you have a, you have a question, or do you, you already spoke to this matter, so do you have a question?
I do. I have a question. Um, and so in regards to the motion of May 19th, the proceed, that passed to create an ad hoc committee that should handle these type of things, um, what is the parliamentarian's opinion on that? Is, is, is it not that this should flow from that? And what happens to this motion that was passed on May 19th?
So there, there are two separate matters. I've ruled on this several times already. This motion is to generate a report with recommendations. Currently, it's directing that report back to the policy committee. Once it's received that the policy committee, if there is these same questions, then that's where it will be dealt with. Whether it has to go to the ad hoc committee or is dealt within, within the policy committee, that would be a discussion at that time. It's not involved with this motion.
Um, Chair-
This is directly reported.
Point of privilege?
Yes, trustee O'Brien, what's your point of privilege?
Um, is it not true that if the cost is over a hundred thousand, it must go to an RFP, Mr. Chair?
Okay, so that's not a point of privilege. A point of privilege is something that impacts the comfort or safety of the-
Mr. Chair, I don't need to lecture on point of privilege. Can you ask the question?
Well, actually, if you're using it wrong, then I, I rule against your point of privilege because it is not a point of privilege.
Can you answer the question, Mr. Chair?
Okay, so we'll answer the question.
Point of order.
So, no, trustee, I'm answering the question. We're dealing with one point of order at a time. Uh, so this, uh, it's, it's not, a prudent person wouldn't assume that this would be anywhere near a hundred thousand dollars.
Can you guarantee that, Mr. Chair?
That's not good enough.
The, there, this, we don't have our purchasing manager on, so, uh, I can, I can ask superintendent Loz on his, uh, professional opinion.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I am not aware of the actual cost, the number of hours required for it. I can confirm that anything over a hundred thousand dollars or more for consulting services per our policy 9/11, uh, is open competitive process, meaning a RFP or an RFT.
Okay, thank you.
You, Mr. Chair.
Uh, this, so the motion is, the motion is at it, as it is. If you wanted to amend the motion, then you can do that. That's not the chair's responsibility to amend the emotion that's in front of the board. Uh, trustee Carabella, did, do you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you.
Okay. Seeing that there are no other questions, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm opposed.
Vice Chair Dour?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Against, Mr. Chair.
Uh, trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
Abstained.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Moving on to, uh, item 8.4, HCDSP attestation. Uh, this is a notice of motion from September 21st, 2021, regular board meeting. Trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to this matter and read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have amended the motion, so, um, and I did send it to Rosie, perhaps if she puts it on or if I read it first?
Uh, I think Rosie, that's, can you look at the screen? Is that, uh?
Yes.
Is that?
But it's, um, the top is the other, the original motion, so I'm amending it with the bottom, the first whereas.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, whereas not everyone at our school board has filled out the attestation form. Whereas York Catholic District School Board has the option non-disclosure of vaccination status on their attestation form. Whereas staff at other boards are choosing this option, so we should have this option for our staff as well. Whereas all those who choose an option other than fully vaccinated will still be required to undertake the required testing and educational program set out by the ministry. So be it resolved that the following option be added to the HCDSP attestation form in the vaccination disclosure policy. Prefer not to disclose.
Uh, thank you. This was moved by trustee Carabella. May I have a second or?
O'Brien?
Moved by trustee O'Brien. Uh, trustee Carabella, you have the floor to lead discussion.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, I think with the whereas, it's quite clear why I've, uh, asked to put this on. Currently, uh, the HCDSP has a dropdown menu that reveals the options of vaccinated, unvaccinated, and medically exempt. So there is in fact over, uh, just over 5,100 employees at our board and just over 1,000 who have not submitted the attestation form. And I'd like to point out the form for York Catholic District School Board, if that could be shown. They, if Rosie could put that up, they have, um, they have five, actually, five options. Um, and I'd like to bring your attention to the option, I don't know if it can be blown up a bit, the option that says, uh, non-disclosure of vaccine, that vaccination status. So mine is obviously a version of that, which is the prefer not to disclose. And this is, this is what I'm proposing, as it will give our staff an option as well. As it is an option currently in use at York Catholic, but currently in use and therefore vetted and, uh, in use, it is reasonable and that I propose that HCDSP offer it as well. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella will open up the floor to any questions. Does anybody wish to speak to this, or does anybody have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was bumped off. I didn't hear a word.
Okay, we're, uh, we're at the point where, um, it has trustee Carabella's, um, notice of motion has been seconded by trustee O'Brien. She has opened the discussion and we're now opening up the floor to questions.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the same point. I'm being bumped off regularly now, so for whatever that's worth.
Okay. Um, do we have any trustees who wish to speak to this? Vice Chair Dour?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I did take a look at the updated school board implementation, there is those guy, uh, which is well laid out and explains, uh, and then my thinking is that we need to stay very positive in trying to understand what is being asked for us and why. I don't think the goal is to force anyone or fire anyone, but rather to keep all our students and staff safe. That being said, we do meet the requirements as laid out for attestation. A, being vaccinated, uh, B, not vaccinated, and C, medically exempt. To my logical mind, uh, we should have just two options, vaccinated and not vaccinated, but I have no issue with the way it is laid out. But when we add the fourth option in the motion now, uh, and I did give it this a lot of thought, my view is that it's only going to create more confusion to the mandate for front ministry. It's only going to dilute the feedback collected, thus defeating the entire purpose of asking the attestation questions in the first place. If you are concerned about privacy, then I'm not sure we should be, uh, because of this. Uh, because only if you are on social media platform, you have a lot more to worry about. I see the passion that my trustee colleague has put into thinking about this motion and bringing to the table however, after thinking about the motion and with due consideration to the intent, uh, I'm, I'm sorry to say I'm unable to support it, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, uh, vice Chair Dour. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this, um, motion? Last call. Does anybody wish to speak? Uh, no, trustee Carabella, you have the floor to close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the closing remarks is, I think this will, um, be effective in helping, uh, teachers, staff, other third-party, um, personnel that come to our schools to fill out the attestation form in good conscience and how they would feel, uh, respected. And, uh, I think it's been vetted. It's been at another board. Um, it's working there, and I think it's a reasonable, um, option to give our staff. So I would ask that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Intomasi, I see your hand up. Uh, did you, did you want to speak to this?
Um, I, I did want to add that, um, under the Occupational Health and Safety Act of Ontario, consent to medical surveillance, subsection three, a worker is not required to participate in a prescribed medical surveillance program unless the worker consents to do so. I want everybody to be familiar with that particular legislation because we cannot mandate, regardless of all the guidelines that are coming down, we legally cannot mandate any attestation.
Uh, thank you, trustee, uh, Intomasi. So we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Vice Chair Dour?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Intomasi?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trunata?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
And, uh, trustee Murphy's opposed, so motion fails. Moving on to staff reports or no staff reports, item 10.1, student trustee update. Uh, trust, uh, student trustees, please present your report.
Hi, everyone. So we have divided our report into three areas as was custom for the past year. I will be starting with the achieving area of our student trustee update. Um, we're very happy to present our first student trustee update to all of you today and update you. So thus far, we've had two meetings of the student senate. Our introductory meeting on September 14th and then our first general meeting on September 28th. So we have now selected student senators to fill positions available on the executive council of the student senate, including our secretary, media representative, and lead senators. In addition, we ratified five major amendments to the student senate constitution at our September 28th meeting, including the addition of a new standing committee on equity and inclusion. This standing committee was based on feedback that we received from our senators through a Microsoft form at our first, uh, introductory meeting of the student senate. The new constitution received a double majority with a majority of senators voting in favor and was passed unanimously by all senatorial delegations. Um, as well, we reviewed the results of that aforementioned survey conducted by all of our senators at our introductory meeting. Um, the most mentioned areas of concern of our student senates, uh, the most mentioned area of concern was overwhelmingly student mental health. In addition to that, we heard, um, concerns surrounding return to school protocols, a lack of safe and inclusive environments within our schools, supports for international students, increasing representation of student voice at the board level, tackling climate change within our schools, increasing supports for students with special needs, educating students on financial responsibility, expanding access and use of technology within schools, increasing diversity and representation of indigenous students within our schools, and supporting LGBTQ plus students. Um, before we move on to the, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, would you like us to field questions individually or, um, altogether after the update is presented?
I is, uh, I is out, so, uh, yeah, I'd like, uh, to move on to the next part of the living and then we can do questions all at the same time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll be presenting the believing portion of our update. So at the beginning of our first general senate meeting, there was a commissioning service by Ms. Taylor, which welcomed all the senators in the senate and one senator volunteered to read the closing prayer. Additionally, student senators were asked to complete a form requesting information on what issues they were most passionate about in their last meeting. One committee this year will be the Catholic Faith in Action Committee, and we're hoping to develop a lot of new initiatives with this committee and hopefully bring some back from other years. Finally, we were notified that the Our Father is starting to be included in the morning prayer at all schools.
Uh, student Senator Rahad Bacharat led a delegation to senate regarding policy I-26, specifically regarding non-Catholic student trustees. Trustee Tokiwa then put forth a motion for student senate to sign a letter of support to be presented alongside Rahad and Kirsten's motion, which will be presented to the board of trustees. The motion passed at every school. On Wednesday, September 29th, trustee Masri Amar and trustee Tokiwa attended their first Equity and Inclusive Education Steering Committee meeting and are in the planning stages to create a bridge between elementary and secondary students through equity initiatives spearheaded through our new Equity and Inclusion Committee in student senate. The student trustees additionally plan on using the senate as a platform to relay information pertinent to students regarding important work conducted within the committee. On Tuesday, at the regular, first regular senate meeting, grade nine senators attended for the first time, serving as an important component of secondary student leaders in each CDSB. These senators will allow the student senate to more accurately gauge the quality of the elementary to high school transition and will allow us to better connect with elementary students on the board.
Uh, thank you, trustees. Are there any questions? Uh, sorry, uh, I see trustee Agnew have your hand up.
Um, yeah, thank you and through you, um, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, wanted to comment that, uh, for your first update, this is a fantastic update. Um, it looks like you have all been very busy. Um, I love the, um, inclusion of some of the initiatives you're putting forward, um, especially the Equity and Inclusion, um, committee. I also had a question with respect, if you could, um, Rosie, could you just scroll to the first part there? Perfect. So, um, the, I do have a question with respect to the results of the survey. Um, and this is amazing to see this list here of the information that you gathered as far as, um, what the most areas, uh, most mentioned areas of concern include. Um, and I think these are extremely vital for all of us to keep in mind. Uh, so when you get the results of these surveys, uh, I'm assuming that that, um, helps to shape some of the initiatives that you'll be looking to support or move forward in the year, or is that accurate? And if so, um, how do you go about determining, um, how you address these areas of concern? I'm just curious. It doesn't matter who answers. Any of you would-
I'm happy to answer, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, so as I mentioned, that we were in the process of amending our constitution as we do on an annual basis. And part of this was, uh, we asked students for their areas of concerns and issues that they're passionate about to help dictate our revision of our standing-
to help dictate our revision of our standing committees for the year, which we do on an annual basis. But in addition, uh, we're hoping this year to help pass, um, further initiatives and more initiatives than we did last year through our subcommittees. And that will be, uh, partnering, our, that will be ourselves partnering with the executive council and student senators to ensure that they are both, uh, joining subcommittees that represent the issues that they're passionate about, which will be happening at our next general meeting. And then through those subcommittees, uh, Alicia Gabrielle and I will each be assigned to one and help students, uh, present initiatives through those, uh, subcommittees, which will then be debated at our general senate meetings and then will pass to our recommendations and our updates to the board. Um, so it will help inform that in addition to helping, uh, to inform our strategic plan for the year. So that includes, um, which speakers we're intending to bring on to talk to student senators and for student senators to ask questions to, uh, which topics we are including in our updates, because just as we present to you, um, student senate and student trustee updates at the board, we present board updates to our student senate senators. So it's really just to help guide our work and inform, uh, all student trustees and all student senators what, uh, the most concerning areas are for our student body.
Amazing. Yeah.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow up?
I just wanted to say this again, I'm extremely impressed with the work that you've done so far. It's the beginning of the year. This is incredibly important. Um, I look forward to seeing further updates and please, uh, let us know at any time how we can assist you with any of these, um, concerns or initiatives or priorities moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Vice Chair Dour, you have the floor.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to echo what, uh, trustee, uh, Agnew said. It's so good to see your report finally. Uh, I have a, uh, couple of comments here. So, uh, you have got some really, really. You have got some really good feedback, uh, from our schools and have identified several areas of concern under the achieving section. So I see those areas as extremely important, however, however, they are very broad in scope. And I would like to see something concrete being done rather than this just being a report. So, uh, my question or comment as you, uh, rather put it as a question. Is it possible to drill down into each of these items with, uh, more specifics? And seek support from staff and how we can support our students on those particular identified areas? Or, uh, another question to you would be, uh, did you have this conversation with staff and can you update us at some later point?
Uh, trustees, who would like to answer that?
Um, I can answer that.
Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so these were just some of the, uh, broader topics that this, the student senators did respond, um, regarding in our, uh, form. We did this because of just what, um, uh, trustee Bowie was saying is we wanted to be informed on the decisions that we're making, on how we're moving forward. And we're also going to use this information to make the subcommittees. Based on the most popular choices, um, we will be making subcommittees that will tackle some of these issues more directly. And for example, if student mental health is elected as one of the subcommittees, if it's voted on, then we will focus on exactly what areas need to be improved on and then relay that information back to the board. In regards to maybe the, uh, categories that will not be made into subcommittees, uh, because I believe we were probably hoping for four or five. We will try to get some information based on what we can do and what we can recommend to the board. And, um, if there is something that we can do as a senate, as a senate-wide initiative, or we can make an ad hoc committee, then that would be something that we could look at as well.
Vice Chair Dour, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, thank you. I'd be really interested to see the follow up of, uh, how we use this with this survey to, to bring action into, into our schools. Thank you so much.
Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to just, um, thank you, the students, for this is an excellent report. And I'm under the achieving, just to comment on that, I'm really pleased that you put in, um, educating students on financial responsibility. Quite impressed. I think it's the first I've ever seen that appear. And I'm really want to support you on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor.
Um, I have a question to all three student trustees. Members of, uh, the senate, uh, what does your constitution say is the requirement? Could you please spell it out for me?
Yeah, um, of course. Our constitutional requirements for students to be appointed as senators, uh, I can actually pull up the document here if you want me to recite it word for word. Um, however, our, I can just tell you right now, because I was sort of, I have been reading this constitution over and over again for the past, um, two weeks or so, or two months or so. Um, students have to be enrolled in the school at which they're representing. Students cannot be, uh, convicted of any criminal activities. Uh, we do have outlines for senators at which if they break them, it's just their duties as a senator, which includes the amount of meetings that they have to attend, uh, their role as a student leader and their role in representing a role model for students. Um, at the, uh, request or, um, permission from our staff advisors and us as student trustees, student senators can be dismissed, uh, on the basis of breaking those rules and regulations. Um, other than that, student senators must be in grades nine to 12 and they must apply every year at the end of the school year for grade nines, the beginning of the school year. And us in partnership with the staff advisors, review those applications and then, uh, submit the list uh, for approval as to who we are accepting as student senators for the year. We have eight from each school to ensure an equal number of votes, but we do have additional home senators from each school who do not have a vote on motions and, um, policies that we present. Hope that answered your question.
No.
Do you have a follow up, trustee Antomasi?
Yes, I do. So, um, the Education Act under section 55 spells out the qualifications for student trustees. Um, the Catholic student trustee must hold the following, must meet the qualifications specified in the Ontario Regulation seven forward slash zero seven, must be Catholic, must hold the same qualifications as board members, except for age, and must therefore be eligible to be an elector of Catholic district school born, school board. Do we not have that in our particular, um, constitution?
Uh, Director Daly.
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, trustee Antomasi, our, uh, membership for student senate is open to all secondary students.
Um, Mr. Secretary, can we verify that with, uh, somebody that's handled, um, the senate? Because my understanding is that our constitution requires them to be Catholic.
Um, yeah, I can, sorry, um, trustee Antomasi, yes, um, our student trustees, so the three of us, uh, that are sitting on the board today.
No, no, sorry. I'm just talking about the senate. No, I'm not talking about student trustees.
Yeah, she's trying to answer.
So, um, unlike student trustees, student senators are not required to be Catholic because, uh, student senate is not an organization that's outlined in the Education Act. Student senate, um, the creation of a student senate is up to, uh, board policy and is often just based on, um, student leadership and student interest in student senate. Uh, so our student senate and our student senate constitution is a student-led document, a student-led organization that is largely, our practices are largely based on how student senate has run in the past. And we do make recommendations, uh, and we do amend our constitution based on what has worked and hasn't. But student senates, um, are definitely not required by the Education Act. They vary largely by board. Some boards have two, uh, student advisors per school. They don't have a senate per se. Um, some boards do not have a student senate as all, at all, and their student trustees are the sole providers of student voice. So our student senate is just an internal organization that is student-led. I hope that answered your question.
Uh, thank you, trustee Bowie. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, you know what? I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I don't see any other questions. I, I would like to, uh, to thank our student trustees. Our student trustees are always, every year are, are so impressive. And, uh, we really enjoy working with you and look forward to, uh, continuing our good works together. Uh, moving on to 10.2, school update. Director Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you and through Mr. Chair, I'm just going to, um, try and share my screen here. Uh, so the purpose of, uh, tonight's update is to, um, uh, bring a little bit of new information, uh, to trustees and answer any questions they might have about, uh, our return to school. Uh, we're, um, you know, into the month of October now, so, uh, it's, it's really a school update as maybe opposed to a return to school update. Uh, but just a reminder that as we were planning for this school year, um, we were planning around five kind of broad areas, making sure that we have a safe, safe and healthy environment for our students and staff to return to, uh, to meet the needs of all our learners, uh, to support our students and staff and families in terms of their overall wellbeing and, uh, their, their, uh, mental health wellbeing. Uh, we continue to try and enhance our abilities or capacity to provide online instruction, whether it's through remote learning, uh, our, uh, Saint, um, Saint Clair, uh, virtual school or, uh, for our students who are learning face to face, uh, but whose instruction may be supplemented uh, via some online instruction. And we are, uh, continuing to try and reengage our students, our parents, uh, our parishes, uh, both, uh, into the life of the school face to face and remotely where appropriate. In terms of some changes, um, or, or I guess some clarifications with regard to some general supports for students this year. Um, last year trustees will recall that, um, many of our, our special education staff were not able to go into multiple schools per day. Uh, they typically went to a school per day. Uh, this year we have, uh, more latitude in terms of the, uh, the support and program that we can offer for our students with special education needs. We continue to offer tiered supports and interventions, uh, from all of our, our special education professionals. Um, and in terms of, uh, an update will be coming a little bit, uh, later on, uh, this month with regards to our mental health literacy and action for secondary students. So, um, we have, uh, a plan in place and training and implementation, sorry, professional development coming for our secondary staff, uh, for mental health lessons that will be taught to, uh, across all of our secondary schools and supported by our schools CYCs and social workers. Um, with regards to re-engaging our students, uh, and staff, we, uh, do have clubs and extracurricular activities up and running, uh, to varying degrees depending on, on the school and, and to the panel. Uh, for our secondary, um, schools, our fall seasons have begun competition. Uh, our first, uh, week of outdoor games, whether football, field hockey or Vegas golf was, was on last week as well. Uh, but certainly for football and field hockey, uh, last week was a bit of our test case in terms of some of the protocols that we wanted to have, um, for our student athletes. Uh, beginning this week, we are permitting, uh, spectators under some, uh, some limited conditions. So one is a limited capacity. Uh, we'll be asking any spectators, uh, to, to do, to really, to be treated as a, a visitor would be to the school. So any adult visitor to the school, we expect them to complete a self-assessment and have that verified. Um, so that self-assessment will be done via a QR code, just like we do at the school level. Uh, spectators will be encouraged to wear masks if they can't maintain physical distancing of two meters, but that should be able to be, um, maintained, uh, outside on our football fields. Um, spectators won't have access to the school building, so they won't be able to go into the building, uh, to use, to use the washroom. Um, and, uh, as I mentioned, uh, we'll ask spectators to remain physically distanced or to wear masks if they're unable to do so. I think it's important to note that, um, these protocols, uh, will be, uh, put in place at the school level. And like any extracurricular activity, uh, it really does depend on the ability of the school uh, to provide the appropriate supervision, uh, for these events. But we're, we're glad to see them, uh, coming back and to allow in particular, not just students, but parents to be able to, um, to see their, see their kids play. Uh, we're, we're not quite on an indoor protocol yet for, uh, girls' basketball and boys' volleyball. Those are our two indoor sports that are going on right now. Uh, but that's kind of what we're looking at as our next step. Uh, obviously with spectators in the building, it takes on a little bit of a different, um, flavor than having people outside in the fresh air. Um, let me just go back to extracurriculars again for a second. Uh, so in terms of our elementary, uh, and in, in addition to, sorry, in addition to, um, athletics, uh, certainly at our secondary schools, a number of our, our clubs, uh, are up and running again or being organized with things like, um, DECA or Model UN, Student Council, uh, various, um, uh, social justice, uh, clubs that are in all of our high schools. Uh, those are also being organized. Uh, some of them are meeting hybrid, face to face and online, some online. Uh, so that's good to see. And if, if you follow, uh, any of our schools on, on, on Twitter uh, or through their school announcements, you'd see those coming. Um, it has been a little bit of a, a, a more cautious approach or a slower approach in our elementary schools with regards to athletics in particular. Um, we do have, I, I guess, some advantage or level of safety in our secondary schools with, uh, the number of students in our Halton district who are vaccinated and double vaccinated. Um, it's, it's pretty, pretty high, uh, even with regards to the rest, rest of the province. Um, and that's true of our, our, our adults as well. Um, at elementary, because we have fewer students, obviously, that are eligible to receive a vaccination, uh, we, we need some different protocols, uh, in place. So kind of the first step for our elementary schools will be to encourage some intramural in-school sports and then move, uh, hopefully, uh, to having some intra-school sports and competitions. In terms of our, um, uh, we, 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 um, talked a little bit tonight about vaccination attestations. Uh, and we know that this is something I, I know trustees have, have heard about. So, um, back in towards the, uh, the end of the summer, uh, the government did announce that there would be a vaccination disclosure process put in for all school boards. We received, all boards received instructions from the Office of the Chief Medical Officer of Health in the first week in September to give us some additional details. Uh, a few trustees referred, um, to those details and the guidelines we received a little bit earlier this evening. Um, essentially, uh, as, as, as we talked about earlier tonight, we've asked our staff, um, and we'll, we'll talk about school staff more specifically, I guess, uh, for now, uh, to provide an ass, attestation that they've either been fully vaccinated um, or some staff may have a medical exemption from vaccination. In, uh, the case, if staff are fully vaccinated, they're fully vaccinated. Any staff who are not fully vaccinated, uh, have to undergo twice weekly rapid antigen screening. And if they, um, fail their screening, uh, then they're required, uh, to go for the more, um, uh, or to go for, for an actual PCR test. Uh, so the screening test, uh, is exactly that. It's a screening mechanism. And then, uh, if the screening mechanism, if somebody fails that, then they are required, um, to, uh, to go for the fall-on test administered by Halton Public Health. We do post weekly reports around the number of staff that are vaccinated, the number of staff overall aggregate numbers that have medical exemptions, the number of staff, uh, who have not completed an attestation yet. Um, a couple of other items that have been, I, I'm sure on the radar of a number of parents and certainly schools. And these, uh, it's a little bit of both elementary and secondary. Uh, so our elementary schools, um, many of them have started to make inquiries with vendors around hot lunch and food, food programs. And we're moving towards that reintroduction after the Thanksgiving break. It's a little bit dependent on, uh, the ability of, of elementary schools to have volunteers, if in fact they need volunteers to administer those, those programs. Um, our secondary school cafeterias are open, uh, for seating, but still not open yet in terms of our surgeries. And they're anticipated to reopen at the end of. And they're anticipated to reopen at the end of October, beginning of November. Another question that's come up quite a bit is with regards to school pictures or school photography. It was something that, you know, we really missed last year and certainly both at elementary and secondary. Parents and students and staff are very interested in that. So schools can again start that process of holding their student picture days or student photo days. There won't be group photos like we would traditionally have in elementary, but individual photos that can be made into a composite. So our elementary schools and our secondary schools are now permitted to start that process and start booking those. A reminder for our secondary students, for our current graduates, for our students who are graduating this year, they are exempted from the Ontario Secondary Skills Literacy Test, the OSSLT. That graduation requirement will be reinstituted next year. So the students that'll be writing, there's two sittings of the OSSLT this year, one in the fall and one in the spring, would be our current grade 10 and 11 students. And we'll go through that process, as I said, twice this year. In terms of secondary school assessments, so our assessment policies are based on Growing Success, which is the Assessment Evaluation Reporting Guidelines from the ministry. At the secondary level, they provide that a final grade, or the final grade for students determined with a 30% final evaluation that's administered either at or towards the end of the course. Trustees would remember last year that a board-wide decision was made that students would not write final exams, really based on the circumstance we were in last year. In the past, so kind of pre-March of 2020, I guess, at the secondary level, there were oftentimes, or yeah, I guess oftentimes there'd be courses that did not have a formal written exam. It really depended on the nature of the course. Some courses through subject council lend themselves to having more of a performance task. So it could be in art or some of the tech courses might have a project or culminating, a culminating activity that would serve as that final 30%. The 30% can be made up in a number of ways. So it can be an exam, a performance, an essay that are suitable to both the course content and the level of the course. So as in the past, so kind of in our pre-COVID times, subject councils have met to make decisions around what those final evaluation formats can be for each class. And they are permitted this year to go back to having a culminating performance task and an exam or some combination thereof. In terms of kind of overall protective measures, not a whole lot new other than the screening tool that we use for, we ask all of our students and staff to complete every day before they come to school. And then we ask all visitors to the school to complete at the school. The assessment tool hasn't changed in and of itself, but it has been, there's been some clarifications made. So when you go on the screener now, there's a couple of reminders, and I've just highlighted a few of them. One of them is that for students or staff for that matter, regardless kind of of what the screener tells them, if students or staff feel sick, they should stay home. And if they're unwell, they should stay home, regardless of what the screener tells them. But obviously, if the screener tells them that they should stay home and then take the directions there, they should follow that. I think it's important to note, and this was something the ministry wanted to point out, that public health information isn't being collected when somebody completes the screening tool. It really is just a way that people can self-screen and make sure that they're ready to teach or learn or attend a school facility. So that's a bit of a change that's been made in the screening tool to point out those two areas. We continue to take direction from our public health unit in terms of both symptom protocol and managing positive cases when they do arise in our school communities. And they have arisen in our school communities. Excuse me, I think all trustees have been copied on communications in schools in all of our municipalities that have had some positive COVID cases. As of today, there's 17 active confirmed cases in the board and six classes closed across the district. We have had three outbreaks since the start of the school year at different schools. All of those outbreaks have been declared over. So they happened a little bit earlier in the school year. And we do post that information on our own internal COVID advisory board that's on the board website. And the province also tracks that information and posts it on the provincial website as well. As always, our board website's the best spot probably to go to in terms of finding out overall information around return-to-school plans and protocols. But we do try and update parents where we need to via email, Twitter, Facebook, and on our Instagram page. And that's a pretty rapid-fire update. But that's what I've got for tonight and happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Director Daly. Up first, we have Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Director Daly, thank you for such a comprehensive report. And I'm so glad to see the spectators are out there supporting our students on the field. Question, don't see any floodlight games scheduled. Why?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So just so all trustees are aware, so floodlight games, traditionally, some of our secondary schools would have nighttime or Friday night lights, probably more commonly called football games. They've never, you know, obviously, we can't mandate schools to run extracurriculars in a particular way, but it has been a tradition at some schools. Typically, those Friday night lights games, and they're not always on Fridays, but our floodlight games do draw a bigger crowd. So they do involve a different level of supervision and organization than a typical, say, 2:30 or 3 o'clock game would start. So we haven't scheduled any. To my knowledge, we haven't been approached by any specific schools yet to see if it's a possibility. But really, we thought we would start off with seeing how our protocols run during the day to ensure that, you know, we don't get overcrowded and that people can follow the directions around screening. So I guess that's the response to why no night games at this point, Trustee O'Brien.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. Director Daly, I've had quite a few requests from parents regarding these night games. Again, these students have been out of sports for a whole year. We had a school like Corpus Christi, hot team, they got floodlights. So there's a lot of questions, if we can do this in the daytime, why can't we do it at night? So I'm wondering, can you revisit this fairly soon about opening up these games? And is it still not too late to change this?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I've seen some of those emails as well. I think it's important to note, or to remind trustees that when we do run extracurricular events that are a little bit later on in the day, as I said, it does require a bigger or a larger commitment from schools. And we have run them in the past. It's something that we will have to talk about with, in moving forward with both our school administrators and our Health and Phys Ed department heads, because ultimately, the responsibility to run those events lands on them.
Thank you. I'll just run through the speakers list. So we have up next, Trustee Agnew, followed by Trustee Antomasi, Trustee Carabella, Trustee DeRosa. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So the question, so you, I was gonna ask about exams, but you have mentioned that because you've probably seen the magnitude of emails we've been getting from parents with respect to exams. But the question I have is around cafeterias. And I have spoken with Superintendent Bakich about this. And she understands my concerns and some of the advocacy I'm trying to bring forward on behalf of some of our high school students and their families. And so as we know right now, our cafeterias are open. However, students are required to socially distance in the cafeteria. As an example, you may have only three or four students at a table, and then they have to be socially distanced. And so I'm getting a plethora of questions, and I'm asking these questions myself. And I do understand, and let me preface that by saying, I understand we're controlled by a different ministry than the McDonald's or the restaurants up the street. But here's the reality. The reality is we have students who cannot sit together in our cafeterias. We know that student mental health and well-being is paramount after the amount of time that they have been separated. They can't sit together in the cafeteria, but they can easily leave the cafeteria, walk up to McDonald's and sit together there. Again, understanding that we are governed by different ministries. However, I think we need to acknowledge that that is, you know, a little bit backwards. We also have students who are struggling to make friends, to meet new friends, to do all of those things that come with that opportunity that they really only have during the lunchtime period. If they don't belong to clubs and they're not part of a sports association, they only have that time, especially if they don't have kids that they know or have gravitated towards in their classes. My question for you is what do we need to do as a board to advocate on behalf of these students to try to make things a little bit normal, to try to get our public health unit to understand that we need to be more realistic with respect to the cafeterias, the students needing to sit together, needing to be together. The cold weather is coming. Students are not gonna be able to walk out and go for lunch the way they are now. So they're going to have to come into these spaces. There's so much that's not happening in the schools right now, as we know, with lunchtime games and lunchtime clubs. So this is a perfect opportunity for us to try to provide a chance for these students to connect with one another. And I also will end this by saying, I struggle, and I understand again that outdoor is different. I struggle with the fact that we can now have indoor sports, which I think is fantastic. But we can have teams of kids trying out or playing against each other indoors with no masks, but six kids can't sit together in close proximity at lunch. So what can we do? Are these conversations happening with public health? I need to know because parents are upset, students are struggling, and I think we need to do something about this. So I'm sorry I went on about that, but I had a lot to say. If you could address that question first, that would be great.
Director Daly, did you want to add a lot?
Yeah, I might ask Superintendent Bakich to add some context as well because she does meet, Superintendent Bakich and Superintendent Merrick meet weekly with Halton Public Health. And I know that they have raised this topic. There's no doubt, Trustee Agnew, that the way that our secondary schools are scheduled right now is not ideal in terms of making those kind of connections. It's one of the reasons why we kind of went to the grade-level lunches. So at least people on the same grades were in the same lunch. But even that is problematic for some kids because their friends might be in grade 10 and they're in grade nine or vice versa. So there's no kind of easy answer there. And actually, when the chair and the vice chair and I, when we met with our student trustees last Friday to kind of talk about how things were going at the school level, one of the things that we did talk about was, you know, it's difficult with only a 40-minute lunch. It's really the only break in the day for both students and staff to do some of those activities that we would traditionally do. And even to take some time out of either the morning block or the afternoon block, I think our teachers really feel pressured a little bit that they don't have the time to do it. So we're still trying to think that through a little bit. But maybe with more specific reference to cafeterias and lunch, I will ask Superintendent Bakich just to talk a little bit about some of the conversations that we've had with public health. And also note maybe, and maybe not specific to this question, but I'll speak kind of my observation in terms of how schools have opened up this year. It's really quite different around some of the expectations that we have because I think last year, you know, everybody kind of understood the tight cohorting and restrictions that we had in place. I think that this year, there is a bit of a divide, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but certainly people who want to see more things open up. And maybe more specifically, it's secondary because as we said, that student population, our vaccination rates are really high. And then on the other hand, there's still people that are really nervous about opening things up. So we're trying to balance both of those ends, trying to get back to some more normal experience. But we're not, obviously, we're not quite there yet. But I'll ask Superintendent Bakich maybe to speak to some of the conversations that we've had at the public health table.
Thank you, Director Daly, and through you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Trustee Agnew. It's true, we've been talking about this almost each week with public health, just to reiterate the concern. They've been pretty steady on their recommendations of recognizing distance between students as much as possible, but two meters distance between cohorts. Having said that, though, I know that it's front and center on the minds of staff at secondary. So they are looking for alternate spaces such as classrooms and gathering areas like the library to try and increase the number of students that can sit together while still following the requirements from public health. So I know that it's a concern and it's duly noted. And we do discuss it on, virtually every week with public health. Their concern is still, you know, finding that balance, just like Director Daly has referred to, of promoting the social interaction while still abiding by the protocols. So I know I don't have an easy answer for you there, but it's one, it's something that we continue to go back to and look for, you know, good solutions for students to be able to gather. So we're looking at approximately three to four, at times, depending on the space, five, possibly six students that interact with one another. And it's something that we're looking closely at monitoring and continuing to go back to public health and ask for direction.
Trustee Agnew, did you have a follow-up?
I do, yeah, thank you very much. So I understand all of this and I'm hearing all of this. So I'd ask a couple of things. One is, I don't think it's enough to wait for direction from public health. I think this needs to be front and foremost. I know that there has been much advocacy done to get sports back up and running, to get extracurricular back up and running, and that's super important. We have now got where we can have spectators understanding that that is outdoor, but still, and if I look at the first slide, we're not mandating that they actually wear masking so they could be out there not masked and not socially distanced watching sports. But again, you know, we have students who cannot sit together in the cafeteria, but they can leave to go to McDonald's and sit together. And so, and or, you know, as I've said to kids I know, go try out for the basketball team because then you can actually hang out with each other. So for kids who are not into sports, for kids who are having a hard time, who are struggling, we have to do better by them. And even if we find places in the classrooms, if they have to be socially distanced from each other, what good is that? What, how can they actually interact and how can they do things? And then they're also having to choose to go into those classrooms and they don't have the advantage of seeing kids in a cafeteria and meeting them. I just really think it's setting a two-tiered approach as far as, you know, even kids who can afford to go out for lunch or kids who are able to walk up for lunch and kids who are not able to do so or their parents are not supportive of that or whatever it might be. So my note on that, and I won't let this go, and I'm sure you can appreciate that, Superintendent Bakich, this is really important for a number of students and staff, or students and parents. I would plead that we don't leave this up to direction from public health, but we continue to make the case and exemplify these examples of why we need to have this change. And we need to do it sooner than later. It's October, it's gonna get cold, and kids are struggling. Kids, I'm hearing from parents whose kids are really, really struggling. And this is affecting them greatly, not having that ability at the lunch hour to be with their friends and make new friends. So I will leave that with you on that. Thank you. And just a point of clarification on this slide that I saw you brought forward. They seem to be contradictory, Director Daly, where I see here spectators are They seem to be contradictory, Director Daly, where I see here spectators are encouraged to wear masks, encouraged to wear masks when physically distancing of two meters cannot be maintained. Two points down, it says spectators will remain physically distanced or wear a mask if unable to do so. So are they encouraged to do so or are they mandated to do so if they cannot physically distance?
Well, they're encouraged to do so because to be honest with you, Trustee Agnew, it does put staff in a difficult situation to monitor adults on the field to say, put your mask on or not put your mask on. So we're hoping, it's a little bit different with students. We are hoping that our, both our students and our adults are used to kind of keeping their distance. And if it's, like I said, with the limits in terms of capacity, it shouldn't be a problem. But we are encouraging, it will be signs up. It's a little bit different with students versus parents.
It's just that those two points don't correlate because one says encourage to wear masks if they can't be physically distanced and then one says they will remain physically distanced or wear masks. So they just don't actually correlate. So maybe we just need to edit that.
We'll clean it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just go through the speakers list again. So we have Trustee Intomasi, Carabella DeRosa. Trustee O'Brien, you've already spoken, so I'll put you underneath. Trustee Mazriyamar and Bowie. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Secretary Daly. So in your meetings with public health, is there discussion about how boards compare? For instance, how do we compare with our determinist board in terms of active cases, positive cases? Can you elaborate on that?
I can't, but I can ask Superintendent Bakaych to elaborate that. I'm not, I mean, we meet with them with the public board. So maybe I'll ask Superintendent Bakaych to respond to that.
Thanks. And through you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the question, Trustee Intomasi. So in terms of comparison, one thing to consider is our size. We actually are doing quite well in terms of our cases. Most of our cases are generated from the community as opposed to coming from the inside of the school. So we, you know, we, in terms of what's the threshold for really good and not good, we're doing quite well with a number of cases. With our determinist board, they are bigger than us, so it is relative. However, we have, the protective measures that we have in place are really working and it's having a positive effect.
Trustee Intomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah. So it's widely known that Halton Catholic District School Board cases are 175% higher than the community. How are we addressing that? Because that's a fact. That's published. It's readily available both on the Halton site, Public Health, as well as the provincial site. So when you say to me, we're doing relatively well, well, from a percentage point of view, we have an incidence rate of .07%, whereas Halton as a community has an incidence rate of .02. That's a substantial difference. When you compare it with our overall enrollment, and that includes the teachers as well.
Director Daly, did you want to address?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the question or the questioning comment, I guess, Trustee Intomasi. I didn't catch the 175%. I'm not sure where that's posted, but regardless, just to kind of give a larger overview of where we've been since the beginning of the year. So we've had a little over 80 confirmed cases. In our 55 schools, we've had three outbreaks. So I think it's important to note that the outbreak designation, or when we think about outbreaks, that's really more indicative of a spread within the school community. Because an outbreak is, there's some connection between at least two cases, an epidemiological connection between two cases in the school. So I think in terms of being able to limit those outbreaks, I think the processes that we have in place and working with Halton Public Health have been relatively successful. We do look at each case really closely. We do rely and work with Halton Public Health to look at our procedures and we speak with them about it weekly. Obviously, confirmed cases in our schools or in the wider community are concerning to us. That's why we are trying to keep a number of different measures in place, whether it's hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, daily screening, wearing of masks, physical distancing, all of those processes or protocols that we have in place to try and maintain safety in our schools. There's no doubt that anytime we have a case positive in a school, it's concerning to us. And we are trying to mitigate those by consistently applying those protective factors. It's one of the reasons why it's, you know, it is something that we do work in concert with Halton Public Health when we're looking at potentially modifying some of those things. So when we say we're going to allow spectators in, at outdoor events, that's one of the things we need to take into account because we certainly don't want to open up things too much that it's going to have a negative impact either on our school communities or on the wider community.
Okay, so, one more clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, Secretary Daly, you said, where am I getting to that? So Halton has a population base of approximately 600,000 people. There are 141 cases, which if you do a percentage calculation, that's about 2%, 0.2%, 0.2%. Halton Catholic has 43,000, is 43,000 strong. We have 29 cases. So if you do the average, percentage average, that is, that's approximately 7%. Then when we compare ourselves with a public board, they have approximately 70,000, they are 70,000 strong. They have 44 active cases. And when you do, again, you do the calculation based on percentage, that only represents 6%. So it seems to me that the data is overwhelming, that maybe we're not doing such a good job at, you know, maintaining the contact cases down. So the question then arises, what can we do better than what we've been doing?
And thanks for the clarification and the math, Trustee Intomasi. I guess I would say that I know at the school level, our principals, our school staff, whether it's teachers, ECEs, DECEs, EAs, our custodial staff, our administrative staff and administrative assistants are all trying to implement the varied measures that we have in the best way that they can. Once again, I would say that the fact that when there's a positive case in one of our schools, the fact that it hasn't turned into, it hasn't spread within the school, is a reflection that we are tracing our cases in an expeditious manner, so there's not more spread within the school. It's not surprising, based on the fact that in our elementary schools, only grade seven and eight and maybe some grade sixes may be vaccinated, that we're seeing more cases in elementary by size than we would be in secondary. But certainly, our meetings with public health and when we review our protocols with them, they have not offered, at least to this point, something that we should be doing additionally.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Daly, you mentioned that exams were being permitted. So can you clarify if in fact then we will have them? And has it been decided for which courses the exams would be for?
Thanks for that question, Trustee Carabella. So over the course of the summer and into the beginning of the school year, we did meet with our subject councils to talk about assessments and how we want to move forward this year. We did hear last year from some students and some parents as well that they felt that our students, because we were learning remotely for so long, may have slipped a little bit in some of those skills around, I don't want to say traditional, but test-taking skills that they might have been more used to if they were in a face-to-face environment all year. So certainly for grades nine to 12, we're emphasizing with our schools that we need to teach those skills to our students. It might, last year, we probably didn't have many multi-unit types of tests or assessments. This year, that'll be more common. So those kind of timed exam-style assessments. I'd probably have to ask Superintendent Kroll to speak about it in a little bit more detail. But certainly, the feedback that we got from our department heads and our teachers were that they felt that in a number of courses, those sort of in-depth culminating tasks were good assessment practices and they felt that they were really valuable for kids. But I'll ask for Superintendent Kroll maybe to add some more context to that.
Superintendent Kroll, you have the floor.
Yeah, good evening and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we did have some really good, rich conversations with our subject councils around the type of assessments that we want to offer. And as Director Daly said, really kind of wanting students to have the opportunity to practice that test-taking skills, to get feedback, to get an opportunity to, you know, to really to engage in those. We did hear from subject councils as well that there were some concerns a bit about student mental health as well. And so wanted to make sure that we're setting kids up to be successful with regards to having an opportunity really to practice those. So I think you'll see, you're going to see different, sort of different subject councils taking different approaches, but certainly giving kids an opportunity to have sort of that, especially in our senior-level courses, those courses where the pathways will be taking them to college or university, giving them an opportunity to have practice for those types, which could be included in the final assessment as well.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Not right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually escorting a question from one of my constituents to Director Daly. And maybe this has been touched upon in the previous conversation, but I'll leave you to judge that, Director Daly. So the question is simple. Why not all schools have extracurricular activities, especially in elementary? And does that depend on the admin of the school? If so, why?
Director Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I think most of our elementary schools have started to introduce different types of our extracurricular activities, structured or organized sports. So at this time of year, I guess it would be basketball and volleyball. We haven't started kind of our school-to-school competitions because as I mentioned, it's a little bit different at elementary and secondary with regards to students who potentially might be vaccinated. In terms of, is it a school-to-school decision or is it based on the administrator of the school? I'm going to kind of answer it in two ways. It's really based on the ability of the school, either through staff volunteers or parent volunteers in some schools, depending on, oftentimes it's how big the school is, the ability to offer extracurriculars. There's no doubt in terms of kind of vaccination and attestation, we really focused on our staff to start with. So the process for schools to have volunteers into the building is a little bit behind where it would have been last year. So I think that probably speaks a little bit more to why elementary is a bit behind in secondary with regards to that. And certainly with secondary as well, because if we're speaking about athletics anyway, secondary schedules are somewhat tied into other athletic organizations. Because if a team advances beyond the Halton Catholic Athletic Association, then they have to meet some timelines of some of our surrounding associations. Again, with regards to conversations that the elementary sports advisory committee has had, I'd maybe turn that back to Superintendent Kroll just to give a little bit more detail on how those conversations have gone so far.
Superintendent Kroll, you have the floor.
Thank you. And again, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, like we've definitely, there is an elementary inter-school advisory committee that has met and we really feel like we'd like to get moving on extracurriculars, specifically athletics for elementary schools. So as Director Daly mentioned earlier, the folks really will be first to have schools set up and run successful intramural programs. So we're going to be sending out guidance to schools on how they can start rolling those out. And we are turning our minds now to what athletic season will look like for elementary students as well.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
No, that's sufficient for the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So we'll go through the speakers list again. So up next, we have Trustee Mazriyamar, Trustee Bowie, Trustee O'Brien and Trustee Intomasi. Trustee Mazriyamar, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this question is for Mr. Daly. My question is, as you know, grade 12 students only have a 15-minute break in each class and then they have their lunches. What I'm wondering now is usually we go on like walks during that 15-minute walk. Sitting for two and a half hours can be a bit much for some students. So coming winter, are you guys looking to other ways that we could take those walks or like get out of our seats?
Director Daly?
That's a good question. And, you know, it's something that Trustee Agnew kind of touched on as well. Like we've been blessed, maybe other than this week, with good weather since September. So that's helped both at secondary for breaks. It's really helped at elementary, certainly with our JKs and SKs being able to get outside. I guess I would suggest that as long as it's not raining out, there's no reason why students can't get outside in the winter if they put on a winter coat and enjoy our winter weather. I know that's not always possible. It might be, and these are, to a certain extent, it depends on the school and the layout of the school. Those might be decisions at the school level where they start to stagger breaks. And maybe it's, you know, some of our schools do have indoor tracks or at least interior hallways where students could still stretch their legs, move around and still be somewhat safe. And again, that, the 40-minute lunch and the kind of limited breaks, there's no doubt it's a long day for students and staff. But again, I don't know why we wouldn't, in the winter, weather permitting, obviously, be able to kind of do those same sorts of things. We just need to be, we need to be prepared for it.
Trustee Mazriyamar, do you have a follow-up question?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd just like to speak something that that Trustee Agnew commented on previously regarding cafeteria protocols. And I have a question for Mr. Daly. I know that, especially from what I've seen in my school and what I've heard from students in our region, is that especially cafeteria and lunch protocols have started to become a little bit of a touch point for a little bit of animosity between students and administrations and security guards and those who are enforcing COVID protocols. And I think a lot of students are feeling very much frustrated with inconsistencies that they see in COVID protocols. Now, I won't talk about the safety of COVID protocols because I know that all students value safety and the safety of others above everything else. And I'm not a public health expert, but I do know that students, you know, regularly meeting with friends in the hallways and walking through crowded hallways and participating in things like sports and then having to be limited in places like cafeterias has led to a lot of frustration. to be limited in places like cafeterias has led to a lot of frustration. I know, especially this past week in my school, we've had students pushing tables together, you know, kerfuffles and exasperation on behalf of both students and staff and security guards. And I think, I think what we're seeing a lot as students in schools is that a lot of students in their frustrations are not only, you know, potentially not abiding by COVID protocols, but they're losing sort of respect for some other protocols that might be very important. And it's leading to a little bit of distrust and lack of respect between students and administrations who are enforcing these protocols. So my question for Director Daly is, in the process of looking at school health protocols, I'm just curious as to what potentially we might see in the future regarding school protocols and whether students are consulted on these protocols.
Director Daly? Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So, so thanks for that, that feedback. And yeah, that's like in, in, I would hope at the school level, you know, the health and safety protocols that we're following now, you know, kind of the overarching guidance was given from the province in, back in the summer. Our, our return-to-school plan is one that we worked on with Halton Public Health. So some of the requirements are really not ones that I would say we have flexibility on. There's certain mandates, for example, our mask, our mask requirements are our mask requirements. Ideally, we want students to maintain physical distancing where they can. But where they can't, that's one of the reasons why they, they have a mask on. One doesn't disclude the other, but they, they really try and work in combination. I think it would be a fair conversation for, for student councils or student leaders at the school to have with staff around maybe what trustee Mazri Amar talked about. You know, when it's getting colder, what are some other options students might have when they have their break? And that really is a little bit of where it comes down to the particular intricacies of a school building or a school site, or how many students are on lunch. I mean, it might be 200 kids at one school. It could be 500 students at another school. So I think there's no doubt that at our secondary schools, and I would guess at our elementary schools too, that there, there's a feeling, and maybe it's reflective of, of the community as a whole, that certainly we, we want to get back to a more regular sort of environment. And hopefully, the high vaccination rate that we have amongst our students in Halton, 80-plus percent, I think it's over 85% now, and, and our ability to limit outbreaks in our buildings and all of the other protective measures that we have in place will allow us to move at some point to a regular kind of semester sort of system or semestrated schedule, but, but we're not there yet. But I would certainly encourage both our student trustees at their individual schools or our student leaders who are on student council to, to engage in those conversations with, with the staff advisors and to work at the school level around what might work at a particular high school within the confines of the, the, the public health procedures and protocols that we have in place. Trustee Bowie, do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you so much, Director Daly.
So next, we have trustee O'Brien, then trustee Intomasi, followed by trustee DeRosa. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you through Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Director Daly, I'm, I mean, I know, I think it's more than just students are, are out of practice with writing exams. It goes much more than that. I'm, I'm seeing and I'm hearing anxiety. Anxiety, these students have not, in grade 12, not written an exam in a year and a half, two years. Are we getting, are we really, really making them ready for university? And they're, these are kids, the subject matter is not the issue. They know their math, they know their science, they know their English, they know their French. But they don't know how to write an exam, and they know that that's a problem. And yet, we are still given the power to these, these, what, these subject councils to, to choose a culminating activity over exam? Director Daly, that is just not right. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I could, trustee O'Brien. It's been, I would say, a relatively longstanding practice in, in our board that subject councils, who are the department heads, the curriculum leaders in our schools, to have those types of conversations. They speak, I would say, I guess, on behalf of, of, of their departments. They are subject matter specialists. They are the teachers in the classroom. So we do rely heavily on them to provide feedback for us. They're with the students every day. They've seen what gains we've made in terms of assessments, but also seen, depending on the grade level and perhaps a particular course, where a type of formal exam may be necessary. So relying on their expertise is really not new. And we are going back, continuing to follow the assessment evaluation reporting guidelines that the province provides for us. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
I do. Director Daly, I just can't accept that. I mean, we are looking at, I could see the subject councils choosing a culminating activities in English, history, maybe French. But when we look at science, first year engineering, the dropout rate is, is absolutely incredible. And these kids, if they cannot write an exam, they are going to have much less of a chance. So math and science, I, I just can't accept a culminating activity. I mean, how do you expound on a quadratic equation? Like, that, that just doesn't cut the mustard. So Director Daly, my question to you is, would you, as director, be willing to mandate, and I mean mandate, an exam in all math and all science subjects in secondary? Director Daly?
No, I, I wouldn't mandate an exam in, in specific subject areas. I would rely on the expertise of our teachers, our administrators, our subject area specialists to offer a final evaluation that they think meets both the requirements of the curriculum and best suits students for success in high school and hopefully develops the skills that, that they'll need when they go to post-secondary, if they do go to post-secondary. Thank you, Director. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Secretary Daly. Given that we share busing with our co-terminus board, have we, from a contact tracing point of view, established how many of our cases have originated on bus routes?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I might ask Superintendent Bakaych to talk a little bit about the contact tracing process that we follow. And, and maybe I'll start and he'll probably get corrected. But when we do have, when a student, if there's a positive case at a school, obviously Halton Public Health wants to know who else is in the class. But one of the first things that we, or one of the additional measures also is whether the student is bussed to school, where the student sits on the bus, who else was on the bus. So maybe I can ask Superintendent Bakaych to speak a little bit more specifically to, to those questions you had.
Thank you, Director Daly, and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Intomasi for the question. Actually, Director Daly's very correct, banging on on that. Typically, what will happen is the case begins with an individual student, and the contact tracing is conducted through public health. They will ask if the student A is, is a bus student and who they sat near on the bus. To this point, the majority of our cases are not involving bus students. However, there's no way really to say categorically that they don't, at some point, involve students because they're engaging in the buses as well. But there is a, it's a thorough process that is conducted and determined by public health.
Sorry, just, all I want to know is, how many of our cases, do we have a number for what is, what has originated on a bus route?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, that's, that's not how the, the information would be, would be shared with us, trustee Intomasi. We, we know that if a student is positive, that Halton Public Health does that kind of backwards tracing. So start with the classroom, including students and staff and who else. They determine, you know, close contacts, high-risk contacts, check the, check the bus manifestos. But that contact tracing is done by Halton Public Health, not by us. Trustee Intomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Can I get my follow-up now, please?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we know that both the federal government and the provincial governments have not made it illegal or have not passed legislation that requires constituents to, to, to be vaccinated, to be tested, and to disclose. If we have both students, along with teachers, who are not vaccinated, do not want to be tested, nor do they want to give disclosure, which is their right, it's their human right not to do so, what plan do we have in place to address this particular issue with both our students and our employees?
Director Daly? Well, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. You're, you're quite right, trustee Intomasi, in, in noting that the provincial government has not mandated vaccinations really for anybody in the education sector. Students are not mandated to receive a vaccination. There's been many boards who have suggested via correspondence to the ministry or the minister that COVID-19 should be added to the list of, of, of diseases that students should be vaccinated for. The government has not moved on that. The government's position hasn't changed as of yet. From what I've heard, when that question has come up, the, the minister has pointed to the high acceptance, the high vaccination rate for our students 12 to 17. So, and, and amongst the adult population in general. So people have adopted a posture of getting double vaccinated without being mandated or forced to do it. So it doesn't sound like, at least at this point, that the government is going to change that position. In terms of our employees or our volunteers or our long, our, our third-party providers, we're following the instructions from the chief medical officer of health that if a, let's tell you, talk about a, you know, a full-time staff member, if they are not fully vaccinated, then they are required to do twice-weekly testing. And that's what we plan to, to continue to follow up on with our employees.
So a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. So my question is specific to that in that if an individual, whether it be a student or an employee, an outside source refuses to submit to bi-weekly testing and does not wish to disclose whether he or she has had their vaccination, how will you address that? And if they issue a work refusal because you're mandating them to do that, how are we as a board going to address that from a labor perspective?
The thing, so students aren't, don't fall into a labor perspective. So we'll take students out of it because students are not required, required to be, to be vaccinated. In terms of our staff?
But are you going to be asking them to stay home? That's what I'm asking.
Are, are you talking about staff now?
No, you, you brought up the fact that labor does not affect students. So I'm telling, I'm, I'm adding that how are you going to address students who are not, do not wish to disclose, do not wish to be tested? Are you going to send them home? That's, so it's a two-part question, one for employees and one for students.
Okay. Well, again, I'll start with students. Students are not required to be vaccinated, and students currently are not required to submit to any kind of testing. If a student is ill or a student doesn't pass a screening in the morning, we hope that parents keep them home. We hope they use the provincial screener each day and then follow that protocol. If the student, it does test positive for, for COVID, then they are mandated by public health to isolate at home until they're able to come back to school. In terms of staff, for staff that, that do not submit an attestation, for whatever reason, we would consider those staff, really the only thing we can consider is that if we don't have proof that they've been vaccinated, then we have to assume that they haven't been. So we'll require those staff to do the twice-weekly rapid antigen screening. And, and really what we need our staff, whether it's permanent staff or occasional staff to realize, is that they need to be available for work based on the parameters under the instructions from the chief medical officer of health. You know, boards can provide direction to their staff. And if direction is not followed, then ultimately, there'd be a progressive discipline model that would come into place. Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope my question is simple. You know, since COVID came on, we, there's been a lot of evolution in terms of trying to mitigate its impact. And in the initial, in the initial stages, there was a lot of talk about social distancing. And I believe that that's come out still as one of the most effective ways to, to prevent contamination, if I can call, call it that. What is the average size of the classroom that we have achieved, given that the government has, you know, provided funding towards that end? It has, we've, we've actually released our reserves toward that end. So I'm just trying to, to assess, you know, one, a year, a year and a half later, the effectiveness of the measures that were, and of the funding that took place to, towards that end and the mitigation of COVID, primarily from the point of view of of average class size. So what is the average class size as we speak today?
Thank, thank you for the question, trustee Intomasi. I'll ask Superintendent Denalfo to speak to the-
Trustee DeRosa, Director Daly.
Sorry, sorry if I made a mistake there.
No, that's okay. I don't think that is an offense. No problem.
Thank, thanks for the question, trustee DeRosa. I'll ask Superintendent Denalfo to talk about our elementary class sizes. We, there are certain requirements that we have to, to meet under, under ministry guidelines with regards to class sizes. But I can let her speak to, to our elementary classes in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly, and through you, Mr. Chair. So to trustee DeRosa, your question. So we do have class size averages. And some, so some of the data I can share with you. Right now, our kindergarten classes, the average in kindergarten is 23, okay? The average from grade one to three, so our grade one, two, and three classrooms is 18, is the average class size. And that falls, so the government mandates for primary that our classes are at 20 to one is the average. For junior to intermediate, so grade four to grade eight, the class average is 23 currently. So we are well under the provincial standards for average of class sizes. So the funding that we have been afforded, we've used very well and have been able to create smaller classes this year.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up?
It's more of a statement more than anything else. So would- Uh, it's more of a statement more than anything else. So would you agree, uh, Superintendent Denalfo, that the, the two-meter distancing is being achieved, uh, generally speaking, in most of the cases? In the classes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Uh, trustee DeRosa, I do believe that many of our classrooms are able to maintain that two meters um, by the way the classrooms are being set up um by the principals of those schools. Um, and wherever those class sizes, it may be a little bit um higher, they're doing everything to mitigate that space so that the space between each of the student desks.
That's great. If uh you would be able to, to share the details of the statistics, I, I, I certainly would greatly appreciate it. And maybe some of my other uh fellow trustees would appreciate that as well.
Thank you. Uh, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, to Director Daly, Director Daly, I'm revisiting the whole s- sports issue. Um, I'm thinking about uh the championship game. And um, again, these athletes, they, they have not played football in a year, more. And they're working hard, say they'll make it all the way to the championship game. And um, do you not think it's, it's a bit of a letdown to, to not be able to play at the regular spot at McMaster University?
Director Daly?
Um, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. F- for sure, trustee O'Brien. I mean, um, uh, I coached high school football for 20-plus years. Um, and, and being able to go to that alternative site for championship, uh, it's not exciting only for, you know, the 40 or 50 kids that are on the football team and their coaches. It's really a, a school event because um, let's use um championships at McMaster, for example, where we've been the, you know, the last 10 years probably. Um, not only are parents and uh players there, but there's busloads of kids that would travel from Burlington or Milton or Georgetown to Hamilton. Um, you know, uh, it's a great school event. Uh, so when we were looking at our athletic season, um, you know, through the eyes of, of where we were at a month ago, or more than a month ago, um, certainly, you know, and the, the idea of sending several hundred students on buses from uh our municipalities to Hamilton were some, were one of the things that we were, we were kind of thinking about. Uh, we know that field trips this year by provincial guidance are permitted, um, but it was something that we, we thought about because um, on those buses, we, we kind of would, I don't want to say pack them in, but they'd be full. Uh, so that was one of the things we talked about. Uh, we also, when we made some of those early plans, talked about whether or not we wanted to transport uh even players from municipality to municipality, depending on what their um, their uh COVID situation might be. Uh, another factor is what expectations there may be in a particular municipality around how students or parents could access the facility, facility. Um, so a facility might say, we require anybody that's here to be double vaccinated, um, wh- whether or not that's our, our procedure in our board or not. Um, so there were a number of things that we had thought about. Um, again, it's i- in an ideal sort of situation, do we want to be able to provide those experiences for our students and families and parents? Yes. Uh, I think it's something that we can uh reconsider. Uh, but some of the initial decisions were made at a point in time with information that we had available to us at that time. Um, and that's why we've started to revisit some of them. For example, like uh, just the idea of having spectators at some of our outdoor games.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. Um, I, I thank you for being open to revisiting that, uh, Director Daly. Um, you talked about moving hundreds of students, but do we not do that every day? And, and could those logistic problems not be worked out just with the um, the uh, the way we do it every, every day?
Um, y- yeah, it would be uh, logistics generally can be worked out in some way, trustee O'Brien. I agree with you. It would, it would have to be, uh, yeah, th- there'd be certain considerations we would need to take into account in terms of which kids were on which buses and how we would track that, uh, for sure. Um, a- again, I think it's a, a little bit, I don't want to say premature, uh, but we're kind of predicting what a situation might be like in another month. And that's hard to predict where we'll be at. Uh, but certainly when we're talking about um, planning and logistics, um, our, our secondary school athletic department heads, our teacher volunteer coaches, uh, our, our community volunteer coaches, they're, they're great around those sorts of things. Um, so we lean on their expertise a- around that for sure.
Thank you, Director Daly.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Caribella, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my question is um regarding the um, uh, the ant- rapid antigen testing and PCR tests. So you were mentioning before, you were saying that we have like instructions or requirements from the Ministry of Public Health. Uh, but there's also Bill S. 201, which is the Den- Genetic Nondiscrimination Act, um, which uh, these antigen rapid tests and PCR tests would fall under when you see their definition of a genetic test and what you're prohibited from asking. It says here, it is prohibited for any person to require an individual to undergo a genetic test as a condition of providing goods or services to that individual, individual entering into or continuing a top contract or agreement with that individual, or offering or continuing specific terms or conditions in a contract or agreement with that individual. And um, so how is it that we're not following the Bill S. um, 201, the?
Director Daly?
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have Bill S. 201 in front of me, so I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, trustee Caribella, I, I don't know the details of, of um, the bill you just read. What I can tell you is um, since um, I guess March of 2020, uh, we've continued to follow the guidelines put in place either by the Ministry of Education or our Ontario Ministry of Health in conjunction with our local public health. Uh, we're following the instructions from the Chief Medical Officer of Health that uh, that we received regarding uh antigen uh, or, or the, the PCR screening. Um, we've been pretty consistent in just about all cases, I think, with regards to aligning ourselves with the ministry and with public health. Um, we, we haven't strayed from that very often. We did a little bit last year with regards to um masking. Uh, but public health, uh, they were well aware of the approach that we took. Um, th- there is certainly uh legal uh opinion out there, um, whether it's, well, there is legal opinion out there to support um, either boards, uh, provincially or boards individually to follow the requirements that we've been asked to follow uh by the province, and that's the approach that we've taken.
Trustee Caribella, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I would like to um, and follow up that with, I'd like to see the actual law that you would be following or that the ministry is, is following, or the public health unit is following. Um, because I think that's very important. So did we ever go get legal advice ourselves? Because it, I mean, we're, we're also responsible for ourselves.
Absolutely, we are. And through you, Mr. Chair, we're following the advice of the Chief Medical Officer and his instructions under the rules for areas at step three and at the roadmap, roadmap exit step, Ontario Regulation 364 slash 20, under the reopening Ontario Act 2020, which requires that school boards establish, implement, and ensure compliance with a COVID-19 vaccine policy, vaccination policy.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, um, Secretary Daly, I believe, I just sent you Bill 201. Um, if you look at it, um, it's not enforceable to require an employee, or anyone for that matter, to undergo PRP testing of any type. Um, so how will we address that? Because failure to do so, we would be opening ourselves to uh legal challenges. Um, there are people, there are, are, there are constituents who do not wish to be tested, do not wish to disclose, and they have a human rights and legal right to do so. How will we address it? So I asked that in my last question, and you failed to provide me with a a probable or a proper response, because you're saying you're going to take measures such as disciplinary action, which you cannot. So failure to do that, how will we address whether it be a student and/or a labor, which would be a teacher, a supervisory officer, even a director, that does not want to submit themselves to any testing and does not wish to disclose?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, trustee Yan Tomasi, I did answer that question. I, I think you disagree with my answer, which you certainly can, uh, but I did answer that question. With regards to students, students are not mandated to um, receive a vaccination. Uh, students can, if they want to, ages 12 and up. Uh, at some point perhaps, vaccinations will be approved for students ages five to 11. Uh, we think that's uh coming, but uh I can't really anticipate when that might be. With regards to our staff, we are requiring staff to follow the instructions as outlined by the Chief Medical Officer of Health, and we want to ensure that our staff are available, available to work under those guidelines.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I do. So I, I guess we're not understanding one another, because if a student does not self-examine, and if a student does not want to self-examine, comes to the school, how do you enforce that student not self-examining? And that would apply to a teacher, that would apply to a principal, that would apply to anyone within the school community.
Okay. Well, I guess if you're talking about the self-screening that we ask uh all students and staff to do each day, if that's what you're talking about, as opposed to PCR, uh, or sorry, as opposed to rapid antigen screening, they're two very different things. So in the first instance, we asked all staff, all students, all visitors to our building, we asked, we asked, sorry, let me rephrase that. We asked students to conduct that screening every day, ideally at home before they come to school. We checked uh or verified that screening the first two weeks of school, as directed by the ministry. Uh, since that two-week period, we've continued to ask students to do the self-screening uh with this COVID-19 screening tool. We're not verifying it at the school level. Staff are required, when they get to school, uh, and we're using a QR code uh to verify with the principal that they have done the self-screener each day. Visitors to the school are also required to do that. If a visitor comes to the school and does not, or refuses, I guess, to do the self-screening, we would ask that visitor to leave. Staff are reminded that they need to do it every day. Principals do follow up with them. It's possible, uh, a teacher might forget to do it on their way into work. It's very simple to do. It's a requirement that we have. And like any requirement uh that we have of an employee, uh, if a, a employee fails to fulfill that requirement, we need to follow up with them.
So, point of clarification, Mr. Chair. So, uh, uh, I'm at odds here. So if an employee refuses to fill out the form, or a visitor, or a student for that matter, what is our protocol?
If an employee repeatedly refuses to follow a direction that their employer has given them, then the employee is subject to some form of progressive discipline from the employer. Uh, obviously, we'd want to try and understand what the issue is. We haven't had the issue with the self-screener in the morning. Uh, with regards to uh our students, they're not required, active screening is not a requirement right now. Um, so we hope that our students are doing it. We hope that our students aren't coming to school, or our staff coming to school when they might be exhibiting potential symptoms of COVID. We hope they're taking the direction of, of both local public health and the Ministry of Health in Ontario. But with regards certainly to our staff, we do have a responsibility, both to uh the other staff in the building and to our students, to ensure that we have a safe environment as we can provide.
Uh, Secretary Daly, uh, Bill S. 201, 42-dash-1, which received royal assent, states unequivocally that you don't have the right to do that as an employer. And we, the board, are the employers, not HCDSB and our operations. So how will you address someone not conforming those particular, conforming to those particular requirements? It's a simple question. How will you address it? You can't do discipline, because that would be illegal. Then we would have to defend. So how will you address it? Notwithstanding that, under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, each employee has the ref- the right to refuse to come to work. Please address the question.
Uh, through you, uh, through you, um, um, Mr. Chair. Um, I have addressed the, the question, trustee Yan Tomasi. I think I've told you a couple of times how I would approach it as the director in charge of the day-to-day operations of the school. You may disagree with me. You may enter a motion for the board to take a different approach, but I have told you how uh I would approach it as the director. I've answered that question.
Okay. At this point, I think we've, we've had very fulsome discussions and um, nothing new is coming forward. We're going to move on to item 10.3. Thank you, Director Daly, for um, your fulsome report and answering um all our questions. Uh, we'll now move on to the strategic plan 2016 to, uh, 20, sorry, 2016, 2021, Director's Report to Trustees, Year Five of Implementation.
Okay, I just have to um, share my screen again, so just give me a moment. Just, I logged myself out of the meeting, so just give me a second and I'll, I'll get back in. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Sorry about the delay, folks, just give me one second. So this report was, was ready at our last board meeting, but we didn't get a chance to it. And thought it was important to be able to, to give trustees an update and some highlights with regards to our strategic plan monitoring. So I'm going to, it, it's a pretty lengthy package in, in the board package. I'm going to highlight some of our successes over the last year and review some of the feedback. And then also try and put it into the context of the last three years as we, as we wind down this particular strategic plan. And then talk a little bit how it might inform some next steps going forward. So just before I do start, just, I, I guess a comment more than anything. And in some ways, it's, it's kind of appropriate. Today is World Teachers' Day, and the work of the STRAP Plan is obviously not just the work of our teaching staff, it's a work of all of our staff, both here at the CEC, in the schools, our trustees, everybody involved in Catholic education here in Halton. So I really am proud and thankful for the, for the work of our senior staff, of our staff in the schools, of our students, the support of our, our families, the support of our Board of Trustees, our parishes, particularly over the last year and a half, as we've navigated our current pandemic. And, and for the support that we've had, despite the challenges we've had to continue to do good work in our schools. So I do want to thank our school-based staff in particular for all of their hard work in pretty challenging times. So we did, just quickly, as a bit of background, we did launch our current strategic plan back in September of 2016. Each year, we monitor the plan by looking at, by surveying our, our, our school communities, and then providing a list of some of the successes we, I think we've reached over the past year. And that's really kind of the bulk of the, the board report. So I won't, I won't highlight everything in there, because I am keeping a bit of a, a look at the time. But I, I guess in terms of, kind of in general terms, some of the things that I think has taken place over, over the last year, that are going to put us in a good position for this year and going forward. Again, it's been the willingness of our staff to adapt, to, to teaching in a different environment, to delivery of services, both at the school level and from our professional support. We started to expand some programs last year with, with French, continued expansion of AP and IB, dual credits, special high, specialist, high skills majors. We started to make inroads in all of those areas, which we're expanding on this year as well. We did have a series of mental health and wellbeing supports that were implemented both during the school year and over the summer that were very successful. We, we launched our, our new website and communication toolkits to our schools. In, in terms of some of the foundational elements, we, we started the process of, of building Milton Number 10. The construction progress there is well underway. We established a virtual school for elementary students, really from the ground up. We've undertaken and been involved in three different boundary reviews. We were able to provide, I think we were still able to provide with the help of our parishes, our pastoral animators, our chaplains, chaplaincy leaders, to be able to provide liturgies and prayer services virtually throughout the school year to maintain that connection. We continue to provide all kinds of out-of-faith formation opportunities for our staff. We did continue to reach out to community partners like Home Food for Thought, or our Kids Network, St. Vincent de Paul, to try and maintain some of those connections. We did, I think, towards the latter part of the year, really introduce some, some fantastic program in learning for our students to both bring awareness to Pride Month and to, to start the work of greater support for our 2SLGBTQ+ students. And that work will continue this year. I think we did make some important progress last year. All kinds of progress around human rights and equity and supporting our diverse student population. So all of those are outlined in, in the kind of the board report. But in terms of more specifics around some of the feedback that we got last year, we had a little over 1,600 parents, parents, sorry, parents, staff, students respond to our, our survey, and you can see the breakdown there. Just a reminder that we, we really look for feedback on the four key pillars on which our strategic plan is based, achieving, believing, belonging, and foundational elements. Our goals over the past five years, under the achieving pillar, have been to provide as many educational opportunities differentiated for our students as possible, to hold high expectations for our learners, and that means both staff and students. We're all learners in our organization, and to collaborate with our community partners in order to enhance the program that we can offer our students. So in terms of the responses, and, and these are in the, in the board response as well. So these are the specific responses that we got for year five. So we'll, we'll go through them relatively quickly, I guess, but then also look at kind of a, an entire response over the last three, over the last three years. So with regards to our experiences and opportunities supporting all of our learners, 74% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that we're meeting the needs of all our learners in that respect. With regards to student engagement, learning, and achievement, again, over 75%, 78% of our respondents agreed or strongly agreed in response to that question, and I'm going to turn it over to Chair Murphy.
Sorry for interrupting, Director Daley. We have to vote to extend to 11:30. Vice Chair Dour? Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo? Come back to Trustee Guzzo, Trustee Tomasi?
Against.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Apology.
Trustee O'Hern Trenata? Trustee O'Hern Trenata? Come back to Trustee O'Hern Trenata, Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee, Trustee Mazri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa?
In favor.
Trustee Agner?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm apologetic, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo? We'll try, Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
Sorry, in favor.
Oh, thank you. Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
Thank you.
Oh, in favor. Trustee Murphy is in favor. So we have six, three, which is two-thirds, so we're extended to 11:30. Sorry, Director Daley, please go ahead.
So on this particular question, to what extent does the HCDSB hold high expectations for learners? 68% agreed or strongly agreed. I'll come back to that, that particular one in a, in a couple of minutes. Under believing, you know, our, our kind of overarching goal is that we celebrate our faith. All of our students and staff aspire to be models of Christ-like behavior. In this particular question, I was asked, to what extent do people feel that the board promotes a Catholic learning environment that's rooted in both gospel values and the Ontario Catholic Graduate Expectations? 81% agreed or strongly agreed that we're, we're providing that. To what extent do our secondary students have a good understanding of the Catholic Graduate Expectations? 75% agreed or strongly agreed. And then a question, and this is a question that would have been responded by, by staff, whether or not staff felt that the board provided faith formation opportunities for its staff, and 90% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that that was the case. Whether or not the, our schools are working in tandem with our, our parishes to, to build that homeschool parish relationship. This year, 70% agreed or strongly agreed. I'll come back to that one in particular in a couple of minutes as well. Our students and staff model Christ in their actions. 72% agreed or strongly agreed. Along the lines of belonging, so embracing relationships, sustaining self, our safe and welcoming schools. Just a little under 80% agreed that our schools promote student safety. 80% our workplaces promote staff safety. And 72% agreeing or strongly agreeing that our students are welcoming for all students and promote a positive sense of self-belong. And the combination of staff and students, again, a little bit lower, under 70, 68%. I'll come back to that one, again, as we kind of summarize some of the findings. And I'll also make kind of a general comment over the last couple of years with regards to our community or external partners. Again, one of our ones that have dipped below 70% in terms of the responses. Opportunities to get involved in leadership, either in the school or in the community. 76% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that students are given those, are provided with those opportunities. And finally, our, our kind of fourth pillar, foundational elements, that really talks about how we use our resources, how we support, I guess, the infrastructure of our schools, but also some messaging around how we, how we use results-based accountability in our decision-making. So in terms of PD development and training for staff, a little over 75% agreed or strongly agreed that PD and training for staff is, is made available. A little bit under 80% that the communication from schools and the board office is clear, transparent, and responsive. This one, again, I'll come back to in a, in a minute, because this use of evidence or data to inform decision strategies or initiatives, this has been kind of consistent over the last number of years, at least in the response we've got, but a little bit inconsistent with regards to some of the successes we've listed. So just before I, I take questions on this year, I did want to talk a little bit about kind of where we've trended over the last three years. And I didn't really want to speak too much about the years prior to that, because I, I, I wasn't here for those years. But if we look at kind of overall, over the last number of years. So if we think about that achieving pillar, the most consistent and highest level of agreement in the last three years has really been around that idea of promoting, engaging our students in the classroom. So there's been consistency over the last number of years around that pillar. For over the last three years, the experiences and opportunities to support here, learners, that's had the greatest increase. On kind of the other side of it, the consistency has really been around of the perception that we hold high expectations for all of our learners. And that's obviously concerning. And I think that will lead to fulsome questions and directions that we, we might want to consider in our next strategic plan. With regards to the believing pillar, again, it's been pretty consistent over the past three years that our staff have recognized that there are lots of faith formation opportunities to take part in. So that's a question that was asked only of staff, but that's been pretty consistent over the last number of years. In the last couple of years, we have seen a bit of a jump in terms of students' understanding of the Ontario Catholic School Graduate Expectations. And I think that's a reflection, both of how it's been treated at the school level, and also how it's kind of been amplified in lots of ways at the school level, both at elementary and secondary, around things like recognition assemblies and graduation awards. We've really kind of tailored some of those awards to the Catholic Graduate Expectations. Again, a, a, a concerning, I guess I'll say, consistent that we, we've, in, in terms of the responses that we've got back around the homeschool parish relationship, that's been on the lower end, and that's been consistent over the last couple of years, despite some, some programs that we've implemented. So again, I think that'll help us inform our, our, our next, our next plan with regards to our strategic plan. In terms of belonging, again, the most consistent responses we've had has been around students and the identifying the opportunities that they think they have for leadership, both in the school or at the community, or in the community. And again, this one's been a little bit hard to, to determine around, and I think we need to, to dig a little bit deeper, because it ha, we have had a consistent response around our relationships with community and external partners. And we do work kind of hand-in-hand with a number of community partners and third-party supports. So I think we need to dig a little bit deeper in, in terms of what exactly we're hearing back with regards to that, and continue to try and build on those supports moving forward. Again, in terms of our foundational elements, pretty consistent over the last number of years around good communication, both from the schools and centrally from, from, through board website, or, or how we communicate via email or on social media. We did have a bit of a jump over the last couple of years with regards to staff responding, their opportunities for PD. But to kind of counter that, the idea that, you know, ideally, we would see staff seeing, you know, recognizing those PD opportunities and realizing that we are trying to provide those PD sessions based on evidence-informed data, and we are trying to provide them based on what we're seeing in schools. But we have had, it's been consistent from a staff perspective that we still do, need to do additional work to connect our overall goals and strategies with how it's being viewed at the school level. So again, I think that's something to inform how we can go forward in our next iteration. So we do know that we started our strategic planning steering committee work last year. Trustee Duarts, the Chair of that committee. The work that we've done so far for our next plan includes a review and update of the Board Mission, Vision, and Values. We're in the process now of completing the RFP to look at an external consultant. And once that process is completed, it'll come back to the STRAP Plan Committee, and then ultimately to the Board of Trustees for approval. That will lead to our next steps in terms of seeking consultation with the wider community and the finalization of our next strategic plan over the course of this year. I think the feedback that we received this year demonstrates the areas where we have been successful. I think it also demonstrates from areas, some opportunities for growth and ones that we'll need to turn our attention to. I think we are well-placed, both in some of the work I think we are well-placed, both in some of the work we did last year and some of the direction and decisions from the Board of Trustees to expand some of our program offerings, both at secondary with regards to advanced placement, continued expansion of our specialist high school programs. And then at the elementary level, the continued expansion of our French immersion program. I did share with trustees in one of my updates, I think it was last week, that we have received the draft board improvement and equity plan from the ministry, and that will really guide some of our work moving forward. But again, thinking about kind of those overall categories that the ministry is requiring boards to focus on. So student achievement, human rights and equity, mental health and wellbeing, and pathways and transitions for our students. I think we're well-placed with the current work that we're doing, and it'll also give us good direction moving forward in the future. So I'm happy to answer any questions or direct any specific questions in any of the pillars, perhaps to some of our superintendents or staff to respond to as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Daley. On the speaker's list, we have trustee Intomasi, Vice Chair Duarte, trustee DeRosa, and trustee O'Brien. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Secretary Daley. So generally speaking, with reference to this particular report, and that is an update on the multi-year strategic plan, which belongs to trustees or the board, I may say. The timing is usually around May. So if we go around the province and we stick only with the Catholic school boards, this particular report comes to the board in May to aid trustees in doing the review of our, the only employer, the only employee who reports to the board. Having stated that, let's move on with this particular report. We have approximately sixteen hundred and forty-six respondents, out of which I would say approximately nine percent are teachers, which would lead me to believe that the report in itself, based on the questions asked, does really not address what has taken place at this particular board, at HCDSB, since early 2020. Why do I say that? Because the COVID-19 has basically hijacked this particular plan. So my question to you is, how has COVID-19 affected or indeed altered the multi-year strategic plan from late 2019 to 2021, October the 5th?
Director Daley?
Thank you, and three, Mr. Chair. So there's, there's no doubt, I, I think trustee Intomasi, you're banging on that whether it's the response rate or how people responded. I think it is, it's been influenced by the experience that we've had with COVID-19. I think in terms of how it's impacted the overall strategic plan, like certainly the overriding priorities didn't change. How we delivered them, or perhaps where emphasis was put, did change over the course of the year. So I, I think certainly around some of the list, the list of what we would consider, our staff would consider, some of the successes we had in the various portfolios. It would speak to some of the changes that we had to make in terms of delivery of services. Certainly around delivering services in a virtual or remote way. Some of them, which we've carried over to this year, some of them now we've kind of moved to a more hybrid approach where, for example, services or meetings with parents might now be a combination of face-to-face and online, or giving that opportunity for parents to, to kind of choose what would best fit their schedule. I think some of that reflection back on some of the teaching and learning processes we changed would still be ongoing. With regards to how other boards report and when they do it, you know, we bring back the strategic plan update to the board, really based on, on the strategic plan policy that we have. I'm not sure if the first part of my question addressed, or sorry, the first part of my answer addressed what you were looking for. But I'd be happy to expand if, if I'm missing the mark here.
Trustee Intomasi?
So you've somewhat answered the question insofar as how we meet Catholic expectations. So within our board, and I'm speaking specifically of why parents send their children to our board. They send them for Catholicity, faith formation. In keeping with that thought, let's move forward to our staff. So within our staff across the board, approximately seventy-six percent of all our staff have taken Religion I, II, and III. Having said that, you've unilaterally appointed, and this is no-
Trustee Intomasi, that's not, trustee Intomasi, that's not appropriate question. It has nothing to do with the strategic plan. Trustee Intomasi, you're out of order.
Religion-
Trustee Intomasi, you're out of order. You're out of order. Trustee Intomasi, trustee Intomasi, you are out of order. You've lost the floor. Moving on to Vice Chair Duarte.
What, I appeal your decision. What bylaw are you quoting to allow me not to have the floor?
Because it's not germane to the subject that we're talking about.
It is. It's, it's about-
Trustee Intomasi, I have ruled you are out of order. Trustee-
I appeal that decision. I appeal that decision.
So we will go to appeal. We'll go to appeal. It's non-debatable. Trustee Intomasi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie? Trustee Bowie? We'll come back to trustee Bowie. Trustee Mazri, Mazri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
Mr. Chair, I am in favor.
Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie? Oh, in the crowd, okay, thank you. And trustee Murphy's opposed. Appeal fails. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
To you, Mr. Chair. I, I did read this report in detail and I liked the report card. And so kudos to Director Daley and staff. We are making connections with our students, staff, and the community. We and all the graphs and the survey results are trending upwards and we are doing something good. I have a comment to make and I think I know the answer, but I put a comment to Director, question to Director Daley, and this is regarding STEM and STEM initiatives. I did read the report in detail and it does not talk about the good work we had on STEM at all. So Director Daley, we have worked with the committee for the past year and the committee has come up with a with a nice road plan that we are implementing for this year. Is there any reason why we chose to skip that?
Director Daley?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I certainly didn't choose to skip it. There's no doubt we did do, I agree with you, Vice Chair Duarte. We, we did do, laid a lot of great groundwork for our STEM initiatives. We have, as we saw tonight, we've got a consultant in place now to lead that work. We're going to do some great work this year and I can't wait to report on all that great work for the update next year. But certainly wasn't intentional to, to not have reference to the work that we've done so, so far. This year with STEM, so thanks for, thanks for bringing that to light because the work of that committee and of our teachers involved should be recognized. So thank you.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have a follow-up?
Just, yeah, just one second. Kudos to you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
I'm going to pass, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair and Director Daley. Thank you for an excellent report. I'm really happy about some of those achievement goals. The one about the two IB students getting, I believe, a perfect score, that, that is so impressive. Then I believe it was the first time in history. Kudos to them and kudos to the IB program. Don't hear a lot about it. You mentioned equity and standing in line with the province. And I noticed that one of the, one of the believing goals was, was the achieving, the intertwining of faith and equity. And wanted just to speak to that because I think we've got to be careful here because there's a mistake in thinking that equity is the Catholic faith. And that's just not true. I mean, if you look in our, in our Bible, our Catholic Bible, Jesus believed in equity and he, he embraced everybody, but it was always on his terms, his terms. Like, for example, when he caught the woman in adultery, he said, "Go and see no more." There's a condition there. The, the man that was healed after thirty years of being lame at the Basida Pool, he, he said, "Go and see no more. Something worse may befall you." When Jesus cleansed the temple. I mean, he, he embraced the equity of these people in the temple, but he kicked them all out, says, "Do not come in here if you're going to make money at God's expense." So I think it's important to realize that, yes, we embrace equity and Jesus embraced equity, but it was on his terms, his terms. And I think that's, that's really, really important to keep that in mind. Director Daley, can you speak to that?
I can, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I can certainly speak to any of the work that we do, whether it's curriculum-led in the classroom or programming that we do at a system level. We do do it through that lens of our faith. So, you know, for example, when we talk about how we respond to acts of, inappropriate acts of racism in the classroom. I, I mean, the document that we produced is called Responding with Faith, Hope, and Love. So certainly, our response to human rights and equity is grounded in our faith. It aligns, I think, with our faith, with our Catholic graduate expectations, with the overall strategic priorities of the board, and with our board's mission, vision, and values.
Trustee, Ryan, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a follow-up comment, and I loved all the, all the, all the other, I guess you would call them, look for us in the, on the report card for faith. I guess I just wish you would have put the, including the Our Father and the Morning Prayers. I thought that was a real kudo, a real coup for us to get that in there. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trust, sorry, okay.
Just, yeah, I'm sorry, trustee O'Brien. Just to note that this is really a report on, on progress that we made last year. So I, I think that would be reflected in next year's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. Trustee DeRosa, did I skip you? Do you have your hand up?
I seated my turn, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm getting tired. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll continue with my line of questioning. So, given that we have Catholic expectations, I would like to ask, and so as to notify the system of all the good teachers, all the good department heads, all the good principals and vice principals, and the superintendents in the pool, how can Secretary Daley, in his role of director, appoint-
Okay, trustee, trustee Intomasi, it's not appropriate. Trustee Intomasi, you're out of order. It's not appropriate for you to ask questions of a, of a hiring matter that was dealt with in camera. It's not appropriate.
It's not in camera.
You're seating, you're seating the floor.
It's publicly stated, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Intomasi, you're out of order. Trustee Intomasi, you are out of order.
You're out of order, Mr. Chair. You're out of order. You're ruling-
Trustee Intomasi, you are to be removed from this meeting. You're not, you're not responding to the chair's orders. You're removed from the meeting. We have to vote to extend to twelve o'clock. Trustee, trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo? Move to trustee Caravella? Trustee Caravella? Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie? Trustee Bowie's in favor. Trustee Mazri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Abstain.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
It's late, Mr. Chair. I'm opposed.
Vice Chair Duarte? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Caravella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. It has to be unanimous. We do not extend. We have to finish the matter on the table. Is there any other trustee who has a question regarding the strategic plan report? If not, then we'll go to closing prayer. Sorry, Director Daley?
I just wanted to thank trustees for their questions and acknowledge the, the good work of, of all of our staff in, in terms of moving our, our board forward and our strategic plan. And before we close, would like to welcome our two new superintendents to the board. Superintendent of Human Resources, Colleen Oldman, Superintendent of School Services with responsibilities for student success, M. Del Sorto. I'm very confident in both of those people, that they'll be able to support the good work that we're doing as a Catholic school board, and they'll be great additions to our senior team.
Thank you, Director Daley. Thank you for your report. As is evident in the report, there is, there is a lot more than we do than just the pure academics. It's quite an extensive amount of work and we work as a team and have a great team surrounding us. Trustee O'Hern Trenata is going to say the closing prayer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. In the name of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, prayer of patience. Lord Jesus, help us, we pray, with patience and perseverance in our way, that we may be gracious in all things, a calm and pleasant person in our living. Grant us the virtue of patience, Lord, when we discern not your will in all. With prayer and perseverance, we can see your plans unfold in perfect, perfect timing. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. It's late. Appreciate all your efforts in, in the meeting. Have a good night.